Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January 28th, 2025 regular session of City Council. I would now like to have the roll call, please.
Mayor Peck.
Present.
Councilmember Christ.
Present.
Mayor Protammy D'Aggofering.
Here.
Councilmember McCoy.
Present.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Here.
Mayor Yevakorim. Thank you. Let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting can be viewed at the city's YouTube channel. It's also on longmontpublicmedia.org/watch or on Comcast Channels 8 and 880. As a message to the public, in accordance with the council's rules of procedures, the rules for providing public comment are as follows: Only Longmont residents and employees of the city of Longmont may speak during first call public invited to be heard. You must provide your address on the sign-up sheet outside before the meeting or I will not call your name. Each speaker is listed to three minutes. Anyone may speak on second reading or public hearing item, and you're asked to add your name to the speaker list for that specific item before the meeting. Anyone may speak during final call public invited to be heard. Members of the audience shall refrain from disruptive vulgar or abusive language, applause, heckling, or other actions that interfere with the orderly function of the council. Now, I would like a motion to approve the January 14th minutes.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor McCoy, seconded by Councilor Chris. Is there any discussion on these minutes? Seeing none, let's vote. Oops, where'd they go?
She's got it.
Is it? Do you want to voice vote?
Please.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. So that passes unanimously. Now, we are at the part where we have agenda revisions. Are there any agenda revisions, Dawn?
I do not have any agenda revisions other than to point out that at your dais, there is a few comments that did not make the packet. You likely have those by email, but those are related to 8902 Quail.
Great, thank you. Do any councillors have submission of documents and motions to direct the city manager to add agenda items to future agendas? Councilor Yarborough?
Thank you, Mayor. I wasn't sure if this is the time where I need to do this, but I want to, I think is, on ordinance 10E, I would like to direct staff to see if we can, what's the word, hold off, delay. Table, there you go. I would like to table 10E 1 and 2 for further discussion on the concept plan.
So this is 8902 Quail Road Annexation. You want to table it. Do you have a time as to when you want to bring it back?
I want us to have discussion further with staff about, for me personally, when I went through the packet, there weren't sufficient, maybe because we do need to talk more about it. I know the developer had talked more about Habitat for Humanity, there would be mixed housing.
Councilor Yarborough, can we get a second for this?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then we'll open it up for discussion. I was just wondering, you said table it. Do you have a date certain?
I don't have dates certain. Whenever staff is available to discuss it, maybe a month.
So it would be for a February meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because this month is over with, so.
Okay, the last regular meeting in February. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved by Councilor Yarborough to table 8902 Quail Road Annexation 1 and 2, and it was seconded by Councilor Christ. Do we have any, Councilor McCoy?
Thank you, Mayor Peck. I'm just clarifying, just for conversation with, so that we can have further conversation with staff to educate ourselves on the whole concept plan or alternatives or?
Or the annexation process?
All of the above. The annexation process, the concept plan, the alternatives. We have been inundated with emails and concerns, and I want to get more clarification as to what the developer can do, what we can add into that plan as council, because we are ultimately making that, approving that decision. So that's what I'm holding on for so that we can have that discussion.
I see a lot of people here, but I would prefer us to know what's going, you know, everybody feel comfortable knowing what's going on and good and educated on that before we go and try to vote on something like this. So that would be the only reason why I'll support this. I just want to, you know, that I understand we need to have those clarifications, and if a member of council needs that to feel good about their decision in the end, I think that's more critical than anything. So if that's where you're at, I'll support that.
Mayor Protammy D'Aggofering.
Yeah, I have a question. So, and it's more of a clarification. So if we do put this on hold, then we're not hearing any of the presentation tonight where we would have the opportunity to ask questions and make recommendations. Is that correct?
I don't know. Is that correct? I just made them up.
Did you need me to repeat the question? Because I know you were walking down, so.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Jeremy Terrell, Assistant City Attorney. Mayor Protammy, if you could repeat the question?
Sure, sure. So if we support putting this, tabling it for now, then that also removes this item from the agenda, meaning we would not hear a presentation from the developer, we would not be able to discuss or make concessions or modifications or recommendations. Correct?
That's correct, Mayor Protammy. And I also do want to note that under the Municipal Annexation Act of, I believe it's 1965, but don't quote me on the number.
I'll go look it up after meetings.
We are at the statutory deadline for City Council to consider the annexation based on when the petition was filed. The best, council has a couple of different courses of action, but based on statute, if council opens up the public hearing for at least one hour, we can continue the hearing for further discussions, including, as you pointed out, further discussions of possible conditions or renegotiation of the annexation agreement to a later date. But we would have to take at least one hour of staff presentation, applicant presentation, public hearing.
Yeah, I just, I don't want to remove that.
Hold off, delay. Table. Table, there you go. I would like to table 10E, 1 and 2, for further discussion on the concept plan.
So this is 8902 Quail Road annexation. You want to table it. Do you have a time as to when you want to bring it back?
I want us to have discussion further with staff about, for me personally, when I went through the packet, there weren't sufficient, maybe because we do need to talk more about it. I know the developer had talked more about Habitat for Humanity, there would be mixed housing.
Councilor Yarborough, can we get a second for this?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then we'll open it up for discussion. I was just wondering, you said table it.
Maybe.
Do you have a date certain?
I don't have dates certain. Whenever staff is available to discuss it, maybe a month.
So it would be for a February meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because this month is over with, so.
Okay, the last regular meeting in February. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved by Councilor Yarborough to table 8902 Quail Road Annexation 1 and 2, and it was seconded by Councilor Christ. Do we have any, Councilor McCoy?
Thank you, Mayor Peck. I'm just clarifying, just for conversation with, so that we can have further conversation with staff to educate ourselves on the whole concept plan, or alternatives, or?
Or the annexation process?
All of the above. The annexation process, the concept plan, the alternatives. We have been inundated with emails and concerns, and I want to get more clarification as to what the developer can do, what we can add into that plan as council, because we are ultimately making that, approving that decision. So that's what I'm holding on for, so that we can have that discussion.
I see a lot of people here, but I would prefer us to know what's going, you know, everybody feel comfortable knowing what's going on and good and educated on that before we go and try to vote on something like this. So that would be the only reason why I'll support this. I just want to, you know, that I understand we need to have those clarifications, and if a member of council needs that to feel good about their decision in the end, I think that's more critical than anything. So if that's where you're at, I'll support that.
Mayor Protammy Doggofering.
So, yeah, I have a question, so, and it's more of a clarification. So if we do put this on hold, then we're not hearing any of the presentation tonight, where we would have the opportunity to ask questions and make recommendations. Is that correct?
I don't know. Is that correct? I just made them up.
Did you need me to repeat the question? Because I know you were walking down, so.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Jeremy Terrell, Assistant City Attorney. Mayor Protammy, if you could repeat the question.
Sure, sure. So if we support putting this, tabling it for now, then that also removes this item from the agenda, meaning we would not hear a presentation from the developer. We would not be able to discuss, or make concessions, or modifications, or recommendations. Correct?
That's correct, Mayor Protammy. And I also do want to note that under the Municipal Annexation Act of, I believe it's 1965, but don't quote me on the number.
I'll go look it up after meetings.
We are at the statutory deadline for City Council to consider the annexation, based on when the petition was filed. The best, council has a couple of different courses of action, but based on statute, if council opens up the public hearing for at least one hour, we can continue the hearing for further discussions, including, as you pointed out, further discussions of possible conditions or renegotiation of the annexation agreement to a later date.
Yes.
But we would have to take at least one hour of staff presentation, applicant presentation, public hearing.
Yeah, I just, I don't want to remove that possibility, so that would be the only reason why.
I think that's fine. I just.
We'll still have the public hearing if this passes.
So even if this passes, we would still continue with the public hearing? No, that's what I wanted to make sure.
No, we would not. Yeah, we'd have to get to item, what is it, 10G on the agenda, whatever the item is, 10E.
10E, yes.
10E on the agenda first, and then council can make the decision to continue once we get to that item.
Okay, so then.
What happens if we vote to table it now?
What happens if we vote to table it now?
If.
I was trying to get that. Didn't come out.
Excellent question. If there's a vote to table without the one hour.
Yes.
Then the applicant would have to refile petition and start the process over, which would involve publishing for the required number of weeks in the newspaper with the city clerk's office. We would also be left in a delicate position, because staff doesn't have formal direction about what, if anything, needs to be negotiated at this point.
I think we should have the discussion tonight, so that's.
So I'll make that friendly amendment to your motion that we table it with the public hearing tonight. Can we do that? Did I, so I think we got, did we get two different messages?
Mayor, if I can jump in.
Please.
Council can open the item, have the presentation, conduct the public hearing, discuss what you would like us to potentially consider and look at. And then council, if you desire, can make the motion to table the vote to a date certain, which I think what Jeremy was saying is then satisfies the statutory compliance issues. And then in terms of items that you want us to look at, potentially gives us a chance to get some clearer direction from council in terms of what you want us to do. So I think it's really a matter of, if you want to consider tabling it, you table it after you go through those first steps.
Okay.
And then give us some direction in terms of what you want to look at that we can actually take. And so I think it's just a mechanics issue.
Yeah, we did it too soon.
Sorry, everybody. Sorry to confuse you. And so I would like to withdraw that motion. Okay?
Pardon me?
I would like to move that we withdraw my previous motion.
Okay. Motion has been withdrawn. All right, moving on. Hold on, everyone. All right. Let's move on to City Manager's report, then.
Mayor, Council, I do have a quick report tonight. So as you know, this morning, there was a flurry of emails from various groups that we work with regarding a recent executive order and documentation from the Office of Management and Budget, OMB in DC. And without getting into too much detail, because we're still trying to figure it out, what I can tell you today is it starts with a pause in federal funding. And as we work through this today, one of the things that we know is that pause actually includes federal funds that have been awarded and haven't been processed, or haven't been drawn down. There's a number of questions that we have. We're not the only jurisdiction asking those questions. You know, as we continue to review it, and you get into the actual memo from the OMB, there is a line that says funds may be removed. And so when we think about that, I just wanted you to know that we're aware of it. We've started the process of reaching out to all of our departments to identify all areas where we have federal dollars in play. And I would say that it's pretty broad across our organization, and everything from public safety to transportation to social services. And so as we continue to work through this, we'll be reporting to council. But we do have some active projects that receive federal funds, specifically the Kaufman Street project, that we're going to start digging through to see what the risk assessment is and what that means. It could be a short pause, because they talk about having reports done by February 10th, I believe. It's the other language that we're seeing deeper in the memo that has created some additional questions and concerns in my mind. So A, we're on it to the best of our ability. We're trying to figure out what that means. I will tell you today that primary concern for me is transportation.
Yes.
And the grants that we have in transportation. And then also on the Housing Authority side, when we think of things like housing choice vouchers, Section 8. And so it may impact operationally. So over the next week or so, we're going to be figuring out extent, scope, risk. And we may be, we'll definitely be communicating with you all, but we may need another session to discuss this once we have more information.
Okay, I think everybody's on hold. In all of Colorado. So thank you for that. We have a special report and presentation, and it involves our new council member. So I'd like Don Quintana, our city clerk, to come down. We need to administration, administrate the oath of office to our newly appointed council Ward 2 member. They did it already?
Yeah, they did.
Yeah, this is hot.
Test, test. Matthew, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. See if I can hold all these things at once. I state your name.
I, Matthew Popkin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The laws of the State of Colorado.
The laws of the State of Colorado.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Longmont.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Longmont.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
And that I will faithfully perform my duties.
Of the office of Councilmember Ward 2.
Of the office of Councilmember Ward 2.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the very best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now you're really on council. Congratulations, Matthew, and welcome. You are number nine on my call sheet. Yeah, it's messed up a little bit. All right, we're going to move now to first call public invited to be heard. Do I have it? Okay, the first one on our sheet is Nathan Vander Schaaf. And I want to remind you, you have three minutes, and we need your name and address.
My name is Nathan Vander Schaaf. There we go. My name is Nathan Vander Schaaf.
Nathan, you're pretty tall. Can you just pull that, shoot that mic up a little? There you go.
Absolutely. How's that?
That's better.
Great, great. And I live at 5413 Cannon Mountain Way, here in the city of Longmont. And I've been a Longmont resident for 24 years. Thank you for taking the time to hear me tonight. I know I am late to the party, but I'm going to talk about natural gas and electricity, infrastructure in the city. Sean McCoy, I think you may remember meeting me 17 years ago. I had the first electric car in Longmont, and it was a Toyota RAV4, and it was incredible. It was absolutely amazing. It charged on the LPC network here that we all enjoy, and has been amazing and reliable. And now the status of EVs around the world and here in the city is second to none. The quality is up, the usability is there. And at the end of the day, electric cars are great technology for propulsion, right? Burning something just makes heat, and most of it is wasted. And it's been really great to have that choice for me and for everybody else nowadays. And thank you to the city and LPC for supporting that. However, when I did first move to the city, I had a friend who lived on Grant Street, and his home was challenging to live in because he had no gas service. 100% electric. There was no gas line in the road. It was tough. He had a dryer from the 80s with mechanical controls. Electric heat was expensive, and they didn't have good ductwork, and didn't have AC. And it was miserable. It was tough to live there. I don't think a gas line has ever gone into Grant Street to this day. You know, at the time when that neighborhood was built, the future seemed bright for electricity. It seemed that we wanted to go all-electric in the 70s, and the city made the decision not to put in gas. It made sense at the time, but even, you know, 20 years later, it was a problem, and people needed it. I recently found out that the city has voted not to put in gas infrastructure in new builds, and has voted as such. I wish I had come before that vote. I apologize doing this after the fact. But I'm about choice for energy. That's what I believe in. I believed in it for electric cars, and I believe in it for gas infrastructure for our neighborhoods. Even though heat pumps are much more efficient, it doesn't mean they're cheaper to run, especially in cold weather, especially really cold weather. We still need our gas infrastructure. We still need it in new builds. I need it in my house. You know, it's, there's other things that people need gas for, generators, for backup power. My neighbor had a house fire, an electrical fire, a couple of weeks ago. And guess what? The water heaters were still on, providing some heat in the basement, preventing his pipes from freezing over. It's too much to not put in a gas network. We need it. We might need it later. And if you really want to make a change, if you really want to improve indoor air quality or outdoor air quality, we can do that with mandates for that very infrastructure. We can have car charging stations in all new builds. We can also have plenty of extra power options for people to have heat pumps and gas and make their own choices. Build the infrastructure, please, and please reconsider that motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. Oh, and just FYI, we did not vote to do that until the ICC quotes come out.
Okay, good to know. I apologize for being out of touch.
No problem.
So anyway, thank you.
John Ko.
I'm actually glad to follow the previous speaker. My name's John Ko, 1899 Third Avenue, because I completely agree with that. I have been experimenting with gas only, and I think we would have a mistake to have electric only. And I've known Marsha Martin, I think, for longer than anybody in council, because she was my boss about 32 years ago. So, but I disagree with her on that, but I wish she was still on council. But Matthew seems like he's going to do a good job. So I want to talk to you about, tomorrow morning is a shareholders' meeting of the Denial Taylor Ditch Company. And city employees and former city employees are the presidents, as well as county employees. So I want to bring you to the fact that some of the ongoings that has happened over the past year, and I've had the pleasure of meeting with people in city council, et cetera, tells me that it's a very dangerous ditch. There are two sources to it, so it cannot be shut off. It's a decorative ditch. I bought a share, so it's part of my purview. But January, June 22nd, my neighbor who has a junior share to me had me taken away, and I'll just skip over all that part, and tell you that I think that this is really where the organized crime of our city has moved to. I'm telling you that six years ago, downtown, there were some very bad doings. And just two weeks ago, I was threatened by somebody that I associate with that same group, who told me that I was poisoning dogs in my neighborhood, and that was written in the newspaper. Now, I don't believe that's true, and I don't believe, but this was told to the judge to get me to not go onto the alleyway. Now, I have to go obtain counsel to make this not. But I'm telling you that I believe that organized crime has moved to my neighborhood. And I'm telling you also that downtown is, and I think I've told you this a few weeks ago, that downtown has become a very safe place. But what has not been safe is people that will come and tell me that I am accused of a very serious crime, when they didn't even make this up until their lawyers told them. And they supposedly didn't have lawyers until they were on video, and these lawyers were telling them to make these bizarre accusations. And the more bizarre accusations are made about me, I just will not repeat here. But thank you very much for your time, and thank you very much, Mayor, and I appreciate all your time on council.
Thank you, John. Terry Moore.
Hi, I am Terry Moore. I live at Three Birdsville Place, up on the north end of town. Congratulations to Matthew. I watched your selection last week. Thank you. I just wanted to say a few things. It's all scattered. I haven't done my research all the way. You'll see me more. There's a structure of government in the Bible, and it talks about a leader of 10 families, a leader of 50 families, a leader of 100 families, and so on. I'd like you to think about that sometime. We listen to who we talk to. As I look over this stuff, I hear, I see you listening a lot to what your employees are saying. I think that's good, but I also think it might be too much. And then I'm limited to three minutes. That's kind of frustrating. You see, I need to do more research, and I talked about that a little bit. I have a website at Ultraloff.com, and I want to talk to you about the Rules Enabling Act at some point. It's too much to go into right here, and I don't have the time. I also live in an all-electric house, and I can tell you, it's a pain. It's a big pain, and I don't like it. But that's all I can afford right now. I have no guile for any of you. I don't like this idea about going and then building high-density apartments on the land out by Quail Street. And I intend to pick up your oaths. And I'll stop early. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Terry. Stephanie Yuhas.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Stephanie Yuhas. I live at 712 Collier. I think what actually brought me here tonight was reading an article in the Daily Camera about apartment. And I was really shocked, because it said, residents have stated that there's too much growth. But I don't see anybody listening. So I'm going to say that I moved here in 1998. The population was around 50,000. Now it's more than double that, on the way to triple the population. Since the pandemic, development has ramped up, and now I think it's out of control. I oppose the hotel that's on Third and Kimbark, and it was really interesting that they moved the mailbox that was there just gone. And then you go to the main post office, and you can't get your letter in the box, because it's really the only one left. So that's just an example of the kinds of things that are happening here with this overpopulation that's happening. That's a minor point. I'm here to stop the development in general. I've noticed that I had to come here to talk about the development. I've noticed that I had to come here to talk about the development where they were going to block the runway at the airport. I've seen a lot of sites off of Nelson and Ninth now, the lot on Hoover by Home Depot that was vacant for years, but now it's closing in on the Blue Ribbon Farm, and they're going to sell that, too, and so that'll go away. When I first moved here, there were farmers and overalls at the diner. Now farmland and open space are rapidly declining, just at the time that we may need the resources to grow our own food. There are sites like Konamoto that were grandfathered in as open space, but I've noticed that our city has a knack for overturning legacy authorizations. For what? Well, I'm sorry to say, I know that Marsha Martin supported 15-minute cities, expecting us all to be healthy enough to bike or walk for miles, carry our own groceries, and I guess work remotely since my 20-minute commute to Boulder has turned into 40. I was disappointed to read, I'm sorry about this, Matthew, but I, to read that Marsha's replacement is not a person of longevity in the community, but actually somebody from planning and zoning. I question if this is a continuation of Marsha's agenda. The city government seems to believe, and not just the council, but the whole government, that, you know, $300,000 to $400,000 is affordable housing, an apartment for $2,000 a month is affordable. But if you're really trying to mitigate traffic, I think you're going to fail, since most workers will end up commuting from Weld County. I came here tonight because I feel we need to continue to speak out on this.
Thank you.
I'm a terrible public speaker.
That's okay.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Kim Brain.
Can you move into back of the phone, because you've got a pretty soft voice?
Yeah. My name is Kim Brain. My address is 1027 Terry Street, Longmont. I'm a proud local business owner here in Longmont. I've owned Magic Fairy Candles for 20 years. I've been on Main Street for a decade. I'm in the process of opening a second business on Main Street that should open in a couple of weeks called Pilos Deli and Provisions. I'm here tonight to voice my strong support for bringing a cannabis spa to our community. First, a cannabis spa aligns with the growing demands on wellness-focused businesses. People are looking for natural, plant-based therapies to manage stress, pain, and overall well-being. Second, this business would bring economic benefits. It will create new jobs, support other local businesses, and generate tax revenue. All while occupying a commercial space that contributes to a vibrant, thriving downtown Longmont. This is hard.
You're doing great.
Crushing it. Finally, a regulated professional spa ensures the safe and legal use of cannabis-infused body products, treatments. It provides a space for education and responsible use, reducing stigma and showing that cannabis can be integrated into health and wellness in a way that benefits the entire community. This is an opportunity to embrace innovation, boost our economy, and offer something truly special in Longmont. I encourage the council to support this initiative and welcome a new kind of business to Longmont.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Peck, members of council. Jake Marcing, 1880 Red Cloud Road, Longmont, Colorado. Best place in the world to live, work, raise a family. First, I want to congratulate Councilmember Popkin on being sworn in tonight, joining this prestigious body. No small commitment. And as you take on this role, I know your, our community, myself included, rooting for your success. So thank you for signing up, and thanks to all the applicants as well. And as you and your colleagues deliberateate this Quail Road annexation project both tonight and it sounds like throughout the next period of time, I would ask that you consider a really fundamental question of, does this proposal strengthen Longmont as a place where working families can build lasting lives? And does it reflect the values that have shaped this city for more than 150 years? When Longmont, I'm a Longmont history nerd. When Longmont was established in 1870, the Chicago Tribune described it as, quote, "A community for the poor who should seek new fields of enterprise." Longmont was not built on exclusivity or luxury. It was built on, by, and for working families. That's why I strongly believe that we need more affordable housing. We need more attainable housing. But we need thoughtful development that lowers costs, provides stability, and ensures that people who work in Longmont can afford to put down roots here. Density is an important tool in addressing housing affordability, but it isn't a solution on its own, especially if it only results in more high-cost rental units without a clear path to homeownership. Families who want to settle in Longmont, like mine, like mine has been lucky to do for four generations now, should have the opportunity to do so. And right now, we're seeing an imbalance that pushes ownership of homes further and further out of reach. And this annexation, as proposed, doesn't strike that balance as effectively as it could. While, as Mayor Peck said last week, it meets the code, whether we like it or not, the question then for this council is to consider the policy in front of you. If we truly want Longmont to be a place for everybody, we need housing options, including more affordable homes for sale, so that working families can put down roots. And next year, when this council revisits the IHO, I really urge you to consider taking on this challenge and taking it seriously, to make homeownership and supporting working people and working families and sustainable, thoughtful development a chief goal, including rebalancing the IHO to support homeownership needs instead of rental construction. That is a real concern. Mayor Peck, members of council, I hope you do take this opportunity to reaffirm Longmont's identity as a community that welcomes and supports working people and gives them the opportunity to put down roots so that they can build, build a life and a future here in Longmont and not just rent one.
Thank you, Jake. Gary Hodges. No clapping, please.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Gary Hodges, 2148 Stewart Street. The pursuit of affordable housing doesn't occur in a vacuum. There is no such thing as a free lunch. When market rate housing stock is artificially reduced due to affordable pursuits, market rate will become more expensive. This is about as fundamental of a truth as one will find in economic theory. You could argue against it, but you'd be foolish to do so. It's just, it's supply-demand. And as I've said before, we're not eliminating burdens with this, but we're merely shifting them to other people. Now, maybe this trade-off is acceptable to the majority, but it's impossible to know because we've never told the residents this truth, that we are affirmatively making market rate housing more expensive for 88% of the population. So it's objectively dishonest to withhold from the public that decisions being made in this room are adversely affecting the cost of living for so many. We should be, and I'm requesting tonight that along with our affordable housing policies, we also calculate the negative impact they are having on market rate housing, so that the people can decide if these are worthwhile actions. To continue as we have will be a lie of omission. All right, so tonight was to be a vote on annexing the Quail Road property for the type of development that is overwhelmingly opposed in this city. The truth is plainly obvious, whether one has been in regular attendance here, engaging at coffee with council, reading letters to the editor, the TC line, Facebook's Voice of Longmont next door, or really any conversation that we have with neighbors or friends in the city. I've said before, you know, that apartments, you end up with people that aren't invested in the city, and we all know that. All of you have looked at the precincts, voting precincts, and wherever there's a large apartment block, there is very little voter turnout. So the correct vote on this annexation is no. We have a new councilman that was ostensibly appointed to represent the wishes of war, too. And I thought we'd learn tonight, but we will learn soon enough if those wishes are respected or if the wishes of a majority on council take precedence. So I have a couple of moments left. I want to just mention, completely off-topic, but the timer, when Aaron was Mayor Pro Tem, he would start the timer after the name and address was given. So the person had the full three minutes for those remarks. And I know that doesn't sound like much, but sometimes, you know, it's five, 10 seconds before people get that out. And so I would request that you wait and hold off to start the timer after they've stated their name and address. So thank you.
Thank you, Gary. I'm sorry I mispronounced that.
My name is Wanda Ferguson, and I live at 347 Sherman. I'm here representing the...
You'll have to talk louder.
Oh, I'm Wanda Ferguson, 347 Sherman Street. I'm here representing the Friends of the Longmont Library. Our issue is item 12 on the agenda, so it's kind of down, down a little bit further, about the lockers, the remote site lockers. And we just wanted to give our support of the idea that the city of Longmont do support the idea of providing a remote site locker for access to books for people that live a little bit further away from the library than downtown. Because transportation is an issue in this town, as I know Joan Peck, our mayor, has indicated with her drive to provide transportation for people in this town. So it is an issue, and it's, I know it's been said by some of the people on the council that, oh, just go downtown and check out a book. It's not that easy for a lot of people. So having that remote site locker is very important. So we think that's a good use of city funds to do that for the library. So we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Evening, Mayor and council members today. My name, as you all know, is Lance Whitaker, 1750 Collier Street, resident and resident for 44 years now. Matthew, I'm sorry, but I'd rather have the NASA guy in instead of you. So sorry that, I think the guy from NASA would have been a lot better. He would have brought some space jobs to Longmont, which is really highly needed. Today is the gift of the Ladybug Day. Today is also Plan Your Vacation Day. Probably should have done it today. Today is also National Data Privacy Day, National Gazeau Day. Boy, do I miss my gazoo. And National Blueberry Pancake Day. So everybody knows what national days are. I've been warning you guys for years about the no apartments. Been telling you, the city's been telling you left and right. They're tired of the boxes. I would like to propose that we do still need apartments that are affordable. So maybe we, because of what happened with the sugar mill, maybe we can look at, maybe put in a high-density skyline in there, in one area. Building it throughout the city is a bad idea. The city has a supply issue with free land, and the developers are more than willing to turn that land into their supply. Well, the city is obviously demanding that their supply be saved. As you know, it's been a long fight with cannabis, hospitality. Glad to have led that. Finally getting down to the final stretch on that. Support gas in our new construction, support roads, also, as you know, support fruit trees and parks. And again, Matthew, all eyes are on you. I mean, all of them. And I even encourage Kevin to come back. You know, we really could have used a lot of, you know, space jobs in your district. I mean, there's a lot of empty places over there that could use jobs.
Thank you, Lance.
High-paying jobs.
Thank you.
Affordable housing is through high-paying jobs.
Okay. Seeing no one on the list, I'm going to call, first call, public invited to be heard, and we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Don, would you mind reading the items into the consent agenda?
I will read those, Mayor. And I just want to alert the council that we're having some software issues with the voting system. I've got a ticket and text support. So if something looks funny, that's, they're messing with it. But we'll vote by hand until I get an alert that it's been fixed, please. All right. The item, the second reading and public hearing for all ordinances introduced on this consent agenda will be held on February 11th, 2025. Item 9A, ordinances approving amendments to the City of Longmont Retirement Plans. A1 is ordinance 2025-11, a bill for an ordinance amending section 3.05.885 of the Longmont Municipal Code, adopting amendments to the City of Longmont General Employees Retirement Plan. 9A2 is ordinance 2025-12, a bill for an ordinance amending section 3.04.885 of the Longmont Municipal Code, adopting amendments to the Money Accumulation Pension Plan for employees of the City of Longmont. 9A3 is ordinance 2025-13, a bill for an ordinance amending section 3.04.885 of the Longmont Municipal Code, adopting an amendment to the City of Longmont Police Pension and Trust Agreement. 9A4 is ordinance 2025-14, a bill for an ordinance amending section 3.04.885 of the Longmont Municipal Code, adopting amendments to the City of Longmont Fire Employees Pension Plan and Trust Agreement. 9B is ordinance 2025-15, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter 6.40 of the Longmont Municipal Code, adding section 6.40.40 concerning hotel licenses. 9C is ordinance 2025-16, a bill for an ordinance authorizing a lease agreement between the City of Longmont as less E and the Archdiocese of Denver as less O for use of the St. John the Baptist Church parking lot for Longmont City employee parking. 9D is ordinance 2025-17, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the City of Longmont to lease the real property known as Vance Brand Humane Municipal Airport Hangar Parcel H23 to Alan Green. 9E is Resolution 2025-05, a resolution of the Longmont City Council establishing the cash in lieu of water rights transfer fee. 9F is Resolution 2025-06, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving an amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement between the City and the Boulder Regional Emergency Telephone Service Authority for Public Safety Answering Point Funding. And 9G is Resolution 2025-07, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving an agreement between the City of Longmont and the Longmont Humane Society for Animal Welfare Services for 2025.
Thank you, Don. Do councilors, are there any councilors that want to pull items off of this consent agenda? I see Councilor Yarborough.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to pull 9G.
Okay, would you like a motion to move the consent agenda, then?
I move the consent agenda.
Minus.
Minus 9G.
It's been moved by Councilor Yarborough, seconded by Councilor Crist, to move the consent agenda, minus 9E. Let's do G. I'm sorry. Okay, let's vote. Yeah, by hand. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. We are now going to our ordinances on second reading and public hearings on any matter. Going to try to buzz through this pretty fast, as I see a lot of people that want to speak. So ordinance, the first one is a bill, 2025-01. It's a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter 6.70 of the Longmont Municipal Code on marijuana stores regarding hospitality licenses. Are there any comments or questions from councilors? Seeing none, I'll open up the public hearing on... Oh, I'm sorry. Councilor Popkin.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. Just a quick clarifying question for the city attorney before we move forward with discussion. When we had met earlier, we had talked about a, hopefully, non-substantive amendment to the text that was on page 11 of the ordinance, line 13. And I just don't know what happened between then and now and whether that was updated. And just for council and public's awareness, there's a line in there that talks about the duration of time for the license to... the duration of time for the license to, I think, suspend operations and still maintain the license. And it said for six months, and I think the intention was for up to six months. And that was not the language in there, and I wanted to make sure that we are reflecting the intention of that before we have further discussion on this.
Mayor and members of council, Tim Hall, Assistant City Attorney. I had looked at that language. My impression is that the last words on that sentence indicate that you can go up to six months and it wouldn't be a lapse. I don't think you need to add that language to make that the effect and intent of that language. And that language is the existing language in our code, just so we're clear. So that's not an additional language, that the additional language is just that little edit.
Sure, and you basically answered my question, which was on the intent. And if I'm reading correctly here, the text here says for a period of six months from the date of such approval. So if we do intend for it to be up to six months...
Period of six months and not be a lapse.
Without causing such license to lapse. I read that as six months or not. So if our intention is up to six months, I'd prefer to make sure that we reflect that intention. Yeah, just for council's awareness, that's page 11, line 13. Says after receiving approval from the authority for a modification of premises under section 6.70.180, the licensee may discontinue marijuana operations for a period of six months from the date of such approval without causing such license to lapse. I don't personally have a strong opinion on what the answer is of this. I just want to make sure that we are reflecting appropriately the intention that is, well, the intention. Page 11, line 13. This reads as six months or nothing at all, the way that I'm reading this at least. So if the city attorney has interpretation here, that'd be helpful. If the rest of council doesn't think it's a problem, I...
To further clarify, the licensee may, so that permissive language "may" gives the licensee the option of doing it up to six months. I agree.
No, no, they say a period of six months. You added "up to."
Yes, I agree. So from the date of, without causing such a license lapse. I think that you're correct, the language might be a little bit more clearer if you added that amendment in there. But my interpretation of the language as it stands is the same outcome.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else on council that have comments? Seeing none, I will now open the public hearing on 2025-01. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this bill? I do see two people, but I didn't know exactly... Hold on, okay. Jordan Person. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council. You've all seen me here several times for this issue. Hello again. First, I want to say thank you to the city attorney, to the city clerk, for all of the work that you have done for this ordinance. I'm here tonight to ask all of you for your vote in favor of this ordinance. And I would like to make two mentions as you continue to finalize this language, and you actually add some of the state language as well. In part two, in the Code of Ordinances Title VI, Chapter 6.70 for marijuana stores, specifically section 6.70.110, the submittal for a lease in the state marijuana code, it states that we need to demonstrate $250,000 in liquid assets. These requirements were a holdover for when the MED and other local licensing jurisdictions were very early in years of legalization. We are not a dispensary. We will not be investing in significant inventory the way that a dispensary or a cultivation facility would. As a spa, the number of $250,000 in liquid assets is rather arbitrary. I recommend striking the proof of liquid asset requirement as a whole. Other jurisdictions, like Aurora, have already removed this specific requirement of liquid assets, and I ask that the City of Longmont do the same. I also ask that you strike the requirement for a formalized relationship with a bank. Banks currently charge roughly $1,500 a month specifically for cannabis businesses, and I will be listed as a spa. As you know, many licensees that have bank accounts are later shut down due to their involvement with cannabis activities. So again, I feel that because we are a spa in the hospitality model, that this is also arbitrary, and I request that you limit that suggestion or that requirement to marijuana stores and not to hospitality establishment licenses. That is all I have. Thank you for your time, and please vote yes to move this forward so that we can have a spa here in Longmont. Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. Ben Owens.
Thank you, Mayor, city members. I don't have much for you tonight. I wanted to get up and express my support of what you all have accomplished with the Citizens Initiative. I know that Lance and Jordan have been working hard to campaign to each and every one of you on the benefits that moving forward with cannabis hospitality will bring to Longmont, encouraging new business, bringing in new tax revenues. And most importantly, I wanted to thank you for your recognition of the citizens' interests. I know that at times, our faith in government is belied by, excuse me, a belief that personal priority takes precedence over the citizens that you represent. And it's been incredible to watch in the last 12 months, you all worked together with the city clerk's office, the city attorney's office, to come bring an ordinance that everyone can support in a way that doesn't ruffle too many feathers, but also moves the city forward in a progressive way. So I just wanted to say thank you, and I look forward to hearing that yes vote here shortly.
Thank you, Ben. So... Yes, come on down.
My name's Terry McDeere, I live at 5,001 Fox Hill Drive. I had no intention on speaking on anything about this, but our instance is to allow cannabis spas in the city, is that right?
Hospitality is under the hospitality part of the marijuana code on the state.
Okay, well, I'll just say one. Having spoken based on neighborhood concerns with multiple policemen from this city in recent years, who basically tell me the preponderance of decriminalization of drugs in the state has had a tremendous impact on their, on the viability of, and the worthwhile nature of apprehending drug use, pursuing drug use problems. I do not want to encourage anything that promotes, that makes any sort of drug use more palatable. So I urge you to vote no. And this isn't, this is coming from my discussions with our Longmont police, multiple, over multiple years, of recent years, including last week. Thank you.
Thank you. So seeing no one else, okay, here we have Steve Altshuler.
Steve Altshuler, 1555 Taylor Drive. I've talked to multiple police also that have told me that since marijuana became legal in Longmont, there were a lot more car accidents where people were stoned. And I'm not real familiar with this, so you can correct me if you think I'm wrong. But if there's going to be a hospitality suite where people, what I've heard from time to time here, people bring their own pot and they smoke it at these hospitality suites. Is that correct? No?
We don't engage with public invited to be heard.
Okay. Well, what I've heard here before, my impression was that people would bring their own pot, they'd smoke it there, and then they'd be driving home. And that just sounds like a really bad situation to me. And if you're having a pot-smoking hospitality suite, there must be some pot available somewhere for them to smoke, otherwise, what is this hospitality suite? So whether they bring their own, or if you buy it there, it doesn't make any difference. You're driving there, you don't need a designated driver to drive there, and then you're driving home stoned. Does anyone else see anything wrong with this picture? Thank you.
Now, you know what, I'm going to close, public invited to be heard, because I gave leeway to a couple of people, but you need to sign up on the sheet, so this could go on forever. So, on second ordinance, you need to sign up on the sheet for that specific item. So seeing no one else who signed up, I'm going to close the public invited to be heard on this bill. Counselor McCoy?
Thank you, Mayor Peck. Tim, can you identify that area in regards to the bank that Ms. Person's was, what page that is on?
Absolutely. Members, mayor, and council. It's not going to appear in the ordinance. The language was redacted because it's not something we were editing in this ordinance. But if you go to the marijuana code...
Oh, okay.
It's 67110.
I thought I missed something, so, no.
No.
And the dollar amount that she referred to?
So 67110E3 states, and I'll just read the whole thing for you all. Financial information, so you need to have a business plan, including the following. And then number three is financial information demonstrating a formalized relationship with an established financial institution, demonstrated liquid assets of $250,000 in the applicant's control, financial projections, including assumptions used, and sources of funds. So that's for all applicants for any license, for a marijuana license. That was just a common application requirements.
All right, thank you. Mayor, do you need a motion?
Yes, please.
I'll move ordinance 10A-2025-1. Ms. Person?
It's been moved by Counselor McCoy, seconded by Counselor Yarborough, to move 2025-01. Let's vote. Oh, all those in favor? Counselor Popkin?
Yeah, forgive my ignorance of the process here. If there's more discussion, when does that happen? Ideally before the vote, right?
It does, but on this one, on the second reading, it is usually as soon as the, I read what the, it is, then I open it up to council.
Yeah, but you didn't, you called for a vote immediately after the, after the motion inserted? You didn't call for discussion?
We can have discussion.
Well, okay.
I don't know what the order is.
I did ask for council input immediately.
No, after the motion, you have to ask for discussion on the motion.
Okay. Counselor, do you want to talk? There you go. Counselor Popkin?
You turned on me.
Thank you, Chair Peck. Forgive my ignorance of the process, I'll figure it out soon. Just a couple clarifying questions as well on this. Again, I haven't been part of the multiple series of discussions that council has already had here. So just, can someone, can you maybe clarify and just start, what is a marijuana store for hospitality purposes?
Really quickly, so marijuana hospitality license, there's a few flavors of them. And there's two major branches that you kind of see demonstrated here today. So there's a consumption branch, and then there's the spa-related businesses branch. Ms. Pearson, person back here, has been talking to the council about a spa-related business that she would have, where they use marijuana-infused lotions and products in the course of a, like, massage. The other branch would be a consumption branch, which is, comes in two flavors as well. So there is, there is consumption where they retail, so they sell you the marijuana and you consume it on the premises. And then there's another branch where you bring your own product and consume it on the premises.
Thank you. And so the ordinance that we're talking about tonight would authorize both of those branches, correct?
Yeah, all three kind of flavors.
All three flavors?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Does Boulder County allow for these right now? Are there licenses for this in Boulder County?
I don't believe so.
Are there licenses in any other municipality in the county?
In the county?
Yeah.
No. And I apologize, there's one other flavor, and that is a mobile premises that they, it's like a party van or a party bus that you can drive around. That one is not in our ordinance.
So that is not one of the branches or flavors, to use your language?
No, so it's already given direction not to do that. So, so no, Boulder County, no.
How many other establishments in the state are operating under this kind of a hospitality license?
To my knowledge, just Denver. Maybe Aurora.
As in one location in Denver, or multiple locations in the city and county of Denver?
That, so city and county in Denver allows marijuana hospitality, and then maybe one other one?
Yeah, I believe there are two jurisdictions that allow it. It's not wide, not broadly allowed, Councilmember Popkin.
And I can get the number of licensed, licenses for hospitality.
If it's easily accessible.
They may be listed on their website, I might be able to get it quickly.
It is, and I would just add, under that list, the caution is people may have a license but not be operating. So the number, they may hold the license but not actually be operating, so it will be skewed. It was skewed last time we looked.
Sure, thank you. And then one more question, did, actually, I might have a second question after this. Did staff or council study, again, I'm still catching up on the process here, study any fiscal impacts from this on the city in terms of code enforcement, public safety enforcement, public safety resources for enforcement? I mean, even legal establishments like bars sometimes require public safety resources as well?
I will do my best to answer that. Councilmember Popkin, Don Quintero, City Clerk. We did reach out to our counterparts and other departments to get their feedback when first exploring the idea of bringing this ordinance and didn't get any decisively negative feedback.
Gotcha, thank you. Okay, last question. Do you know why, there, do you know if other municipalities in Boulder County have considered this type of a license process in the past?
Councilmember Popkin, I'm not aware of anybody in Boulder County that have considered it.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I have the answer to your question about the number of licenses. So the number of hospitality and sales licenses appears to be seven in the state, and the number of just hospitality licenses, I believe, is about nine. Ten licenses, but one of them is repeated for some reason, so I see an aye.
So I will weigh in, since nobody else has their light on. When we legalized marijuana in the City of Longmont, I think it was in 2017, we decided that four would be the number that we would allow. Because we do have, I think, three that, at the time when we legalized it, three that were in the city, but they were in Boulder County, and we did not annex them in. So basically, that left seven. So why I'm opposed to this is this is adding four more. The ability to add four more is, am I correct?
Four more hospitality-specific licenses, yes.
Right, and I just think that's too many for our city. I just can't go with about 14. No, I'm sorry. About eight, yeah.
And if I might, Mayor, I was just going to correct, there are four that look like they're in Longmont, but they're actually in county enclaves.
So that's eight in our city.
Right, correct, but four that we, that are technically within our jurisdiction.
Right.
Currently.
So that would be, yeah, it might be 12.
It'd be 12 at most.
Yeah, 12. Well, I'm off two. DT's better, I know, that's why I'm bringing it up. So let's vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? No, let's do hands. All those in favor? All those opposed? So that vote dies.
No, it passes.
Oh, I've...
Oh, wow.
Sorry, new counselor, I was still counting six. We now have seven, so that passes four to three? With... Pet, Crist, and Popkin in opposition. Okay, let's move on, see if I can do this next one correctly. We are now at a motion to reconsider, and it is called 02025-04. This is a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property... What? An ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as the Vance Brand Municipal Airport Hangar Parcel H34D, the premises to Mile High Skydiving Center. This item is placed on this agenda for reconsideration after it did not pass on the second reading on January 4th, 2025. City Council made a motion on January 21st, 2025, to place the motion to reconsider this item on the January 28th, 2025 agenda. So, just for knowledge, reconsideration of a vote is when we vote for something and the majority vote gets to reconsider that vote at the next regular meeting. Because this was a tie vote, either side could bring it back. So it is coming back now for reconsideration. I will move that we move this motion to reconsider 2025-04. So it's been moved by myself, seconded by Mayor Protem Hidagel Ferring. Is there any discussion? Counselor Hidagel Ferring?
Thank you, Mayor. So I was the one who brought it back for reconsideration. I had voted against renewing this lease, and the basis for it was, was out of a place of frustration. There was a question that had come up around an off-site landing, and we didn't have the answers to, you know, what was the rationale, what was the record of that? So we didn't have the answers for that. I feel like it was a different issue, and not necessarily one that could be addressed by non-renewing the lease, so it wasn't really addressing the actual item to be voted on. The other thing that I'm noticing that's coming up, and I, I'll admit I'm getting bad at it too, is we need to really connect with staff prior to our meetings to make sure that they're prepared to answer our questions. I know I felt very bad for Levi, he was on the spot, and he didn't have the answers, and it takes time to pull up those documentations. So, you know, I can speak for myself, I gotta get better at that. So when questions do come up, they have the answers they need to support that. As far as not renewing this lease, it does put us in violation of other contractual obligations we've had, we've already signed on. And the fact we also have, and I do have a question for Harold, an executive session coming up where we will be talking with legal and FAA to find out what, well, not representation, so we can discuss what we can do as far as a legal body or a governing body in regard to the airport. What date is that executive session going to occur?
We're trying to figure that out with schedules right now. We have one coming next week on a different legal matter.
Okay.
So our intent is to have that in February.
Okay, so I think, you know, to take an action as harsh as this, at this time, before we've had the chance to really discuss what are our legal obligations, what are our boundaries, you know, asking those questions around the grant assurances, and where do we wanna go in the future? I don't think, you know, I think voting down this particular lease agreement is not gonna help us get any closer to those goals and objectives. So that's why I brought it back for consideration.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Counselor Popkin?
Thank you, Mayor Peck. I just wanted to say I appreciated Counselmember McCoy's comments on the 14th in terms of exploring shorter durations of leases. I think that it would make sense perhaps for the council to consider that agnostic of a specific tenant, but I would be supportive of the council considering that for airport properties, considering, I think it's 30 years been the standard right now, and maybe that reduces some competition at the airport and includes certain services that might wanna step into that space. So, I would support that absent a specific tenant discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm glad you brought that up because that's gonna be part of our legal discussion. So thank you for that. I voted this down for exactly the same reason, in that I had asked for the off-site landing data for this business, and it was not readily available. So I appreciate Mayor Protem's comment that I should've probably asked that question so that our airport manager would've been ready. He's kind of on the spot. So, I would now like to, do we need a public? No, we don't need on this. We're going to vote on reconsidering it, and then we're gonna vote on the motion again. So, let's vote on this motion. All those in favor of reconsidering the 2025-04 bill, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So that passes unanimously. Now, I would like to read the actual motion. It's 2025-04. I would like to move a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as Vance Brand Municipal Airport Hangar Parcel H-34D, the premises to Mile High Skydiving Center.
Second.
It's been moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Rodriguez. Is there any discussion from counselors? Seeing none, let's vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? And that passes unanimously. We'll move on now to a bill, 2025-07, for an ordinance conditionally approving the vacation of an access easement generally located within Hall Ranch Open Space along Antelope Road. Is there any discussion or questions, comments or questions from counselors? Seeing none, I'll open up the public hearing on 2025-07. Is there anybody in the public? No one has signed up for that, let me double-check. Double-check my messages here. But is there anyone in the public that would like to address this motion? I'm sorry, this ordinance. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on 2025-07 and ask for a motion.
Mayor, if I might interject?
Yes.
This is the item where, that we need to continue the public hearing to February 11th?
I think that, wasn't that 25-08?
Am I wrong?
D. I think it's D, Don.
Isn't it Hall Ranch? It is this item. Yeah, I apologize, it is this item, Mayor.
Oh, you're correct, I'm sorry.
I distrusted the software altogether in this moment, but it is, my brain says Hall Ranch, yes.
Okay, but we are gonna have the public hearing, and then we're going to not vote on it.
You would continue the public hearing as well as the item to February 11th?
Okay. Can you turn on your microphone, please?
All right, thank you, Mayor Peck. I move 10C, 2025-7, to be moved to February 11th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor McCoy to continue the public hearing for 2025-07 to the February 11th, 2025 meeting, and it was seconded by Counselor Crist. Now, do we have any discussion on this? Seeing none, let's vote. All those in favor? Aye, all those opposed? That passes unanimously.
And Mayor, that was just for the public's benefit, that was a noticing error that needs to be corrected, so the public hearing may be completed.
Okay.
February 11th.
I confused that with our earlier public hearing discussion, and so, thank you for clarifying that. Now we're at 2025-08. This is a bill for an ordinance admitting Section 4.04.290 of the Longmont Municipal Code concerning a code correction on use tax exemption for construction material. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing on 2025-08. Is there but anyone in the public that would like to address this bill? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on 2025-08 and ask for a motion.
I move ordinance 2025-08.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Crist, 2025-08, and seconded by Counselor Popkin. Is there, there's no discussion, let's, let's vote. Is there any discussion on this? I asked in the beginning. No? Okay. Let's vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And 2025-08 passes unanimously. We're now at E, which is the 8902 Quail Road Annexation. The first one is 2025-08. It is a resolution finding a parcel of land known as the 8902 Quail Road Annexation, generally located in the northwest quarter of Section 17, Township 2 North, Range 69 West of the 69th Principal Meridian, eligible for annexation. Are there any questions or comments from council? Counselor Popkin?
Thank you, Chair. I had a question for the city attorney here. I have previously seen this in a public hearing format when I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I wanted to inquire directly with you as to whether it is necessary that I recuse myself from this discussion.
Counselor Popkin, Eugene May, city attorney, thank you for the question. I don't think it is. The standard is in Charter 4.2, which requires every member of council when present to vote upon ordinances, resolutions, and motions unless he shall have a personal interest therein.
So that last part is referring to a conflict of interest?
Yeah.
Clause there? And my previous service on a border commission for the city that happened to see this would not be a personal conflict of interest?
That's your determination? It would seem like it would not be. Also, this is a legislative matter within discretion of council. There doesn't seem to be any quasi-judicial due process-type restrictions on your participation.
Thank you. And then just to clarify for the members of the public, the role of someone serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission versus serving on a policymaking body like the city council is fundamentally different, right? Both by charter and by function? Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so you were not gonna recuse yourself?
No, you turned mine on.
Thank you, all good. Based on advice from the city attorney, and considering that I take the different roles that I have served in very seriously on this, I don't feel like I need to. I don't feel like I have a conflict of interest or a personal interest in this, and I feel like I can separate the decision that I was asked to make and the role that I was asked to serve in for Planning and Zoning Commission versus the role that I serve in here. If any other council members do have concerns, I'd be happy to discuss that.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Well, she was already on, you already put her on. She goes first.
Okay, thank you. I just have a quick question. If we hold off on our comments and questions, will we have an opportunity to ask those after the presentation?
Yes, because it'll be when we make the motion, after the motion's made, then, and seconded, then we'll discuss it.
As far as making recommendations and, as well?
If there are questions at the end of the presentation that they ask for questions, then you can...
Ask for questions.
So now you have your marching orders. Counselor, I mean, I'm sorry, Harold, city manager.
No, 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 you didn't.
No, but I see Harold wanted to make him...
Way in.
A way in.
So what I was gonna say, Mayor, council, is that staff is here to answer any specific questions you have on this. The applicant is here and does have a presentation to make on this item.
Okay.
And then, as we stated earlier, then you can ask questions at that point of the presentation. You can open the public hearing, then you can ask additional questions if you have those, and provide direction to staff, and then you can either vote to approve it, vote to not approve it, or you can table it.
Okay. So, thank you for that, Harold. Counselor Popkin, I know, I wanted to say thank you, and the reason I asked for your statement about whether you should recuse yourself is I thought it would be good to be recorded. So, Counselor Rodriguez?
Thank you. This doesn't necessarily always come up when we deal with annexations, but I wanna point out tonight that we have two items under E, one and two. The first being the resolution, which specifically is talking about statutory requirements for annexation. So this has nothing to do for the people in the field tonight about what specifically is the concept plan or anything like that. This specifically relates to the piece of property, and if it's eligible by state statute to be annexed. So I just wanna make sure that people know that when we start calling folks down for public comment, and also generally as a reminder to my colleagues, you know, I know you've heard it many times before, but we don't usually see it back-to-back like this. We usually see one and then the other.
Right.
And so that was the only statement I like to make before we get into the actual meat.
Okay, thank you. And I'm gonna turn it over to our staff for presentation.
Okay. Good evening, council. Phil Taylor, senior planner with the city of Longmont. I have been the case manager for this annexation since initial application submittal. Happy to provide a brief overview and then answer any questions that may arise. Numerous staff are here to answer your questions. The applicant is also here with a presentation. So, an annexation petition has been filed for properties along Quail Road, generally located south of Quail Road, north of Clover Basin Drive, west of Wildfire Court, and east of Airport Road. The application includes 8800 Quail Road, 8840 Quail Road, 0 North 87th Street, and 8902 Quail Road totaling approximately 17.34 acres. The properties are currently zoned agricultural in unincorporated Boulder County. On March 26th, 2024, city council authorized staff to accept and process an annexation application. This annexation application proposes to zone the property residential mixed neighborhood, which is consistent with the existing envisioned Longmont designation of mixed neighborhood. The applicants are requesting the residential mixed neighborhood zoning to facilitate the development of approximately 310 housing units. The 310 housing units does meet the maximum density required by the zone district. You can now see the concept plan on the screen. The review of this plan began in May of 2024. Three formal reviews and numerous meetings with the applicant occurred before we scheduled this for public hearing. The document you see now was developed through that review process. The concept plan proposes two- and three-story residential units. This plan also shows where future access will occur. Primary access is planned to be taken through two entrances off Clover Basin Drive along the southern property line. One entrance will align with Larkspur Drive, and the second will be located near the western property line. This concept plan also limits... This concept plan also limits vehicular access onto Quail Road to emergency vehicles only, limits building height to two stories along the northern property line, and provides future access points to the property directly west.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. I would like to ask whether this presentation is going to cover both items E1 and E2, because they're separate questions.
This presentation is generally designed for the annexation review, not the statutory compliance.
Well, so, item E1 is for statutory compliance.
Correct.
And so, can we save the presentation beyond statutory compliance for E2?
Absolutely. If that's your preference.
I feel this would be confusing as far as votes taken by the city council if we hear the full presentation along with the applicant's presentation before we just get to statutory compliance.
Okay.
Well, this is up to the city council as well. So I'm just, I'm saying that, to me, statutory compliance should come first, and then we can move on.
I agree with that, and I also think public invited to be heard on this should be on the statutory compliance. No, on the annexation?
Yeah, I don't think the votes would necessarily be similar.
Okay. So, can we hold the presentation? We'll move on to, we'll go back, actually, to the first part, E1, and then when E2 comes up?
Happy to answer any questions about E1.
Are there any questions from counselors? Counselor Chris? Oh, number six. Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Chris here.
I know.
This is my first time looking at an annexation from this hat, and I have a question for staff and Jeremy when... Hi. Hello, Jeremy. Can you just clarify, from my understanding and maybe some others in the room, when we're talking statutory compliance here, with regard to the resolution finding a parcel of land known as the 8902 Quail Road Annexation, lot of parentheses, eligible for annexation, what are we talking about when we talk about the statutory compliance aspect of this?
Good evening, Councilmember Popkin and Mayor and Council. Jeremy Torell, Assistant City Attorney again. Just one moment, my computer wakes up, but actually... So, under the Municipal Annexation Act of 1965, I was right in the year. I double-checked. City council has to first adopt a resolution sitting in a public hearing. We all did that a couple weeks and months ago. The second part is then to have the public hearing concerning the eligibility for annexation under the Municipal Annexation Act. To be eligible for annexation, you have to sign petition which we already determined. There has to be a 1/6 perimeter of the area proposed to be annexed contiguous with current existing boundaries of the city of Longmont. There has to be no land held in identical ownership or included as part of the proposed territory for annexation without written consent of the owners. No annexation proceedings have been commenced by another jurisdiction. The annexation will not result in attachment of area from the school district. The annexation will not result in the extension of municipal boundary more than three miles. And then, election is not required under the section because the petition has been filed. And the annexation must complete the annexation of all platted streets within the area to be annexed. That's in the staff communication report, and staff's position, as I understand it, is that all the criteria have been met.
Thank you. And so, for, just for the purposes of understanding outside of that language, this is basically saying that any concept plan discussion related to an annexation proposal is eligible to happen?
Yes. Put a different way, the application is complete, meaning that everything, all the Ts and crosses and Is are dotted, doesn't mean we're going to accept it for annexation. It just means that, yep, they submitted a good application, we can accept it if we choose to do so.
This is legally eligible for consideration for a future development of some kind?
Precisely.
Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay. I will now open the public hearing on 20... No, that's, I'm sorry, we're not voting on this section. Let's just vote on, I need a motion for 2025-08. Did we take it?
I move resolution 2025-08.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. So it's been moved by Counselor Rodriguez, seconded by Counselor Popkin, that we move 2025-08, which is the statutory compliance making 8902 Quail Road eligible for annexation. Any discussion? Seeing, okay, Counselor Chris?
Well, as I mentioned before, I think that section 3B triple I, said area is urban or will be urbanized in the near future. I believe it does not meet that qualification. It is still in the county, and something that is of concern to me is that the nearest neighbors are not able to weigh in on this until second call because they're out in the county and so are not citizens of Longmont. And also, just, we had a pretty robust discussion about city services, that feeling that there needed to be more city services for the general area in terms of sewer and, anyway. Although Marsha Martin, Counselor Martin, was in favor of the saying that it was, annexation was available for this plot, she was concerned also about some of the city services there. So my intention is still to vote no on the availability of, of resolving to prepare it for annexation.
With all due respect, Councilmember Chris, those comments are extremely germane to item E2. Item E1 is specific to statutory regulations, and it meets statutory regulations. So, concerns? Very well placed for E2. I don't understand how you can say that it doesn't meet statutory regulations outside of a nebulous definition of urbanism.
Okay, let's vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
So it passes six to one with Counselor Chris opposing. Now, we're going to move on to 25, I'm sorry, 2025-09. It is a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the 80902 Quail Road Annexation and Concept Plan, generally located in the northwest quarter of section 17, township two north, range 69 west of the 6th Principal Meridian, and zoning the property residential mixed neighborhood RN. So this, this part of it now is to approve the annexation, and this is when, after the presentation, we will have public input. So, staff?
Thank you again, Mayor. Sorry for the initial confusion. I'm going to pick up where we left off. Is that okay with everyone?
Perfect.
Okay. You can now see the future land use and transportation systems map from Envision Longmont. The subject property is located towards the bottom right corner of the screen in a red star. This is a close-up of the map on the previous screen. Again, subject property highlighted by a red star. Subject property, again, designated as a mixed neighborhood land use in the Invision Longmont Comprehensive Plan. The proposed residential mixed neighborhood, as mentioned previously, does align with the comprehensive plan designation. The mixed neighborhood land use category can provide residents with a mix of housing options and densities, which could encourage a greater variety of housing types. It can also serve as a transition between single-family neighborhoods and higher-density corridors. And it's important to point out, the mixed neighborhood land use category allows single-family detached homes on smaller lots, duplexes, triplexes, townhomes, and smaller multifamily In addition to the subject property's land use designation, it is also identified as an area of change in Invision Longmont. Areas of change are defined as locations where future growth could be desirable and/or beneficial to the community. Per the comprehensive plan, areas of change are considered appropriate for redevelopment. In addition to Invision Longmont, the subject properties have also been considered for future residential development for decades. Comprehensive plans dating back to at least 1995 have included this area for potential The subject properties are part of a larger county enclave. They are within the Longmont planning area and the potential annexation area defined by the intergovernmental agreement with Boulder County that IgA states, and it's on the screen, the city agrees that county enclaves within the planning, potential annexation area should be brought into the city to ensure adequate facilities and services are provided and ensure that any future development is consistent with the goals and policies of the city. Moving on from Invision Longmont, you can now see the review criteria for all annexation applications. Annexation shall comply with the criteria seen here. However, annexation is a discretionary act. The city will never be compelled to annex a property into the city. That being said, staff concludes this annexation application does meet all the review criteria seen here. In addition to review criteria applicable to annexations, you can see review criteria on the screen that are applicable to all applications. It is the applicant's responsibility to prove or that their application meets these requirements. But when staff provided the detailed analysis of this and the annexation review criteria in the staff report, we conclude these review criteria are also being met. As you can see from the large number of comments you've received, the public in attendance today, there has been a lot of involvement with surrounding communities, which is great. It's exactly what we want. Most of the public comments received have been on the topic seen here. When the applicant provides their presentation later, they should be able to discuss how their application meets the concerns of the citizens. Finally, you see an approval slide here. This recommendation is based on the recommended approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff's conclusion that this application meets all applicable review criteria. I am happy to answer any questions. I know the applicant also has a presentation. Thank you.
Any questions from counselors? Okay. Counselor Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Peck. Real quick, this could be a substantial decision-making answer, so... For concept plans, I know that a material change in concept plan has to come back in front of the city council. What is the definition of a material change? Is there such thing as a minor change to a concept plan that would be administratively approved?
Good question. Please hold.
We don't have, Grant Penneland, Director of Planning and Development Services, we don't have a clearly defined definition of material change. However, in the past, in the way we've implemented, is if it deviated from things like density, major points of access, commitments to buffers, et cetera, that would require that type of application being brought back to city council for reconsideration.
Thank you. And so, my question, would it be within the purview of city council to, in concept, memorialize a concept plan? As in points of access, location of transitionary density? Or transitional density?
Yeah, and I guess to clarify or maybe follow up on that question, to a certain degree, the annexation contract, annexation agreement already does so by referring to the presented concept plan. And the annexation contract's language does note that any modifications would have to be brought, as you pointed out, material modifications would have to be brought back to city council. So in terms of the level of detail in that concept plan, again, generally, anything that was identified in that plan and needed to be modified would have to come back to council, unless Jeremy has any other...
No, I have no disagreements with that.
So, for example, they couldn't switch a two-story boundary along one side to a two-story boundary along a different side of the property?
That is correct. That is how staff would interpret.
A material change. Thank you.
I do have a question, and I think it comes in this presentation. Where on your concept plan is the donation of land to Habitat for Humanity? And how many units are we talking about? And will they be for sale units? That'd be on the applicant's slide, but we did see the concept plan here, and that is what...
Yes, that is, that is not addressed in the concept plan. The concept plan is considering zoning and maximum density, but not any agreements with Habitat for Humanity.
So there are none yet? Okay. Thank you. So, can we have the staff presentation before?
This one?
I don't mean the staff. I mean, the developer, or should we have public invited to be heard in between them after? All right, let's open it up to the staff, I'm not staff, to the developer's presentation.
Ryan McBreen, Norris Design, 244 North College Avenue, Fort Collins, Colorado, 80524. Nice to be here tonight. Really appreciate Phil and staff getting us to this point. It's been a long process, but it's one we valued, and we're excited to be here tonight and hopefully garner approval this evening. So, I think by now, we all know where the site is, but one thing we really want to point out is that the property truly is the proverbial hole in the donut. You know, this isn't a typical, you know, this isn't a development on the edge of the city. This is right in town. It's the heart of the city. We're close by, and it's a logical place to have development and to annex and bring it into the city. Also want to talk a little bit about the owners of these properties here. As there was a previous question about the intentions of whether the owners are aware of this process, this annexation request is comprised of four parcels of land with three separate owners. The application this evening is working with those owners to annex these properties willingly. They're actually here this evening, and I'd like to say a few words, so I'm going to let them step up here as part of our presentation right now.
Good evening, Mayor Peck and members of council. My name is Steve Ward, and I'm speaking on behalf of my father, Charles Ward, my family, and as a trustee of the Charles and Eleanor Ward Living Trust. We own the middle couple parcels in the land proposed for annexation. A little bit of background, my family moved to Longmont in 1960. I was born here in 1964, and then we moved on to the Quail Road property in 1968, when my dad built our house there. So, I lived there from the time that I was age four until I left for college, or until I graduated from college, and my father still lives there today. We, as a group of sellers, appreciate the opportunity to be heard during this process. We decided to sell together instead of each on our own, and as a group, we contracted with or decided on Capstone Companies as a broker to market our properties for us. Capstone has a wide reach into apartment for sale and affordable developers in the state of Colorado and across the nation. After marketing the property for three months, Capstone got us exposure to 183 different development groups, and in that process... And in that process, we received no offers for for sale or affordable housing. So although we see, as you see, the lack of those products being offered in Longmont, no one wanted to build that on our property. I want to take a quick moment just to clarify that it is the three owners in this situation who are asking for this annexation. It is not the developers. The process is costly and complex, and we couldn't do it on our own, and we have asked Vista Residential Partners to provide us with assistance and guidance. I feel like there's been a little bit of misinformation maybe in the community about these properties being actively farmed today. I think that would be a mischaracterization. I would argue that these properties have not been farmed since 1968, when we built our house. And I am making a distinction between farming for a living and having a couple horses or some goats. Going back to my childhood, there was actual real life farming going on all around us. But we simply had some horses for 4-H projects and enough land to grow hay to feed those horses. Next, I feel like I need to stress the fact that we're talking about private property that is completely unencumbered. We are not talking about any form of public open space. While it may look like open space, because there are a few houses on large lots, those lots are private property and have always been private property. Neither the city of Longmont nor Boulder County have ever made an offer to buy these I guess I just want to say, in 1968, when we moved out there, we were part of a small rural subdivision, completely surrounded by agriculture. That's not the case today and really hasn't been for 25 years. This area is no longer rural farmland. It is completely surrounded by the city of Longmont, including business, retail, other housing developments. In my opinion, this annexation makes sense. The concept plan makes sense. The city of Longmont needs more housing. This fits squarely within the envisioned Longmont planning goals. And as hard as it is for us to admit it at times, density can be a good thing. Density is a more environmental, sorry, environmentally friendly housing alternative. It's lower for water use, energy efficiency, and land use efficiency. So again, thank you for letting me speak, and I'm going to step away.
Thank you, Mr. Ward.
My name is Melanie Boran, and my husband Ben and I own the west parcel of land proposed for annexation. We've lived here for 24 years, and we feel very fortunate that we were able to raise our children in a setting where we could have goats and chickens, and our kids could participate in 4-H while essentially living in town. Our goats have been an amazing hobby, but we are not at all farming the land. We are private homeowners who work full-time jobs to be able to afford to live there. Our property is almost completely surrounded by the city of Longmont. My children attended Altona Middle School and Silver Creek High School, and they walked and rode their bikes much of the time, thanks to the bike and pedestrian paths that are already in place. They pass on their, they passed on their way to school, not just single-family homes, but duplexes, apartment buildings, and commercial developments, which we feel made for a rich mix of neighbors and neighborhoods that we felt lucky to live in. We, as the homeowners, are requesting and supporting annexation. It is part of envisioned Longmont's long range plan and will be beneficial to Longmont in providing much-needed affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Melanie.
Thank you. Ryan McBreen, Norris Design, again. Kind of moving along into discussion, one of the items we talked about too is these properties are surrounded by development. A variety of housing has been pointed out. It is located in an urbanized area. As you can see here on this graphic, you know, within 10 to 20 minutes, there are several major employers, as well as many retail and commercial opportunities to be utilized by those residents. It only makes sense to put density and people in these areas that can utilize those spaces. We also want to step back for a second here too, to talk about where we started here. On the screen in front of you was a concept developed based on initial research, discussions with staff, and understanding of the path forward through the city of Longmont. As you can see, initially, a public right-of-way was proposed connecting Clover Basin Road with Quail Road, which also included a widening of Quail Road and making it a public road in the city of Longmont. Additionally, there wasn't a clear delineation between developable area or future open space, parks, or any of those amenities here, as a very simple graphic. But as we move forward in the process, we talked to the neighbors, and we heard about this. And then we intentionally made each change as a result of our neighborhood outreach and comments we've heard and concerns we've heard. First and foremost, we heard concerns about traffic on Quail Road being in Boulder County. So what we did is we revised our concept plan. As you can see, there's no longer any direct vehicular access to Quail Road to the north. That only access there is emergency vehicle access as required by life safety, so that's the only people that can access that. Secondly, was density and height. Our maximum height is 35 feet, which matches the maximum permitted height in the surrounding area in the communities and the low-density residential standards within the city of Longmont. Additionally, we're limiting the residential, or that height, to two stories along Quail Road, as you can see here in the lighter area on the northern boundary around Quail Road. So we've committed to making sure that there's nothing taller than two stories on that area on the northern boundary. Additionally, we talked about further compatibility with an existing neighborhood. We've placed amenities, open space, and park are located on the east side of the property, which is directly adjacent to existing single-family neighborhoods within the city of Longmont there. You can see that on the east side of the property there in the green. As you can see, this evolved significantly since our original concept of this project, and we've done a lot of listening, and there's a lot more detail and specificity that you typically don't see at this level of annexation. A lot of compromise and thoughtfulness has gone into this plan to this point. Also, would like to touch base on a few items that have come upon this proposal as we've worked through this process. As a developer in any jurisdiction, we only have the guidance from the city to go on as we move forward and we embark on this risky proposition to annex or provide any applications to the city. First and foremost, we look at the comprehensive plan, the land use code, and we use guidance from the city to shape our applications and what is ultimately submitted for review. As you can see from this table, starting from the left, our application is consistent with this guidance across the board. It starts with the comprehensive plan envisioned Longmont, which the city, along with input from the community, worked hard to prepare in order to provide guidance for development and developers within the city. The envisioned Longmont plan calls this property out as mixed neighborhood, as previously noted, permitting a mix of residential types and a density up to 18 DUs an acre, which roughly works out to 312 units based on our acreage. The corresponding zoning, as recommended by staff, is the residential mixed neighborhood designation, which then permits a mix of residential types and a density of up to 18 DUs an acre or 312 units based on our acreage. And final column is, per our proposed annexation, we continue this consistency. We're proposing a residential neighborhood with a mix of two- and three-story residential uses at a density up to 18 DUs an acre, and we're capping our maximum density allowed or units allowed at 310. It will never go above that. The annexation application is following exactly the guiding vision of the comprehensive plan and what the city of Longmont has envisioned for this property. So we're just following along with the guidance that were provided. Just a little bit more about the zoning too. As mentioned, it's consistent with the future land use plan, it's consistent with the surrounding areas. Clearly, the city wants the mid-density zoning along higher traffic corridors, such as Clover Basin. And this RMN zoning is generally flanks the Clover Basin to the north and south in this area, as you can see from the east and west. Different housing types and density are entirely appropriate to place adjacent to each other. And it's important to distinction to note that the phase complementary use, which is used frequently in these guiding documents, doesn't necessarily mean exactly the same as. Providing different housing options and price points within the same areas creates healthy neighborhoods and provides different opportunities. Finally, there's some concern about building height. I'd like to point out that the proposed zoning and project has a maximum building height of 35 feet, which is exactly the same as the single-family zoning and rural residential zoning found in the neighborhood areas of Longmont. We are not pursuing a multifamily designation, which would have permitted residential height of up to 55 feet. We are not doing that. What is proposed is thoughtful, consistent with guiding documents, and is complementary to the rest of the neighborhood in this area. Would also like to talk about the multimodal plan included as part of this application and point out a few of the commitments made as part of that. This includes, we're going to improve Clover Basin Road, that'll now include a bike lane, tree lawns, and walks, which are consistent with the already-built portions of Clover Basin to the east. Our round, we're going to commit it to putting a roundabout at Clover Basin and Larkspur intersection for traffic control and safe pedestrian bike passage. Inclusion of a bike pedestrian connection from Larkspur all the way down to Quail Road. Adding walk and tree lawn on Wildfire Court on the east side. Addition of walk and trail along Quail Road on our own property. The project is bringing a lot of connectivity both within and outside the site, positively impacting the whole neighborhood, not just this new project. I will note, there is an existing bus stop on Clover Basin, which we're going to work to relocate and improve as part of this project as well. Oftentimes, there's a focus on the concerns about the project and the development, but we'd like to point out the positive provided, that the entire community will benefit from the future development of these parcel. First and foremost, as we've talked about, buffering and open space along the eastern edge of the property, creating great transitions between our proposed project and existing development. Reduced building height along the northern boundary, committed to doing that with a two-story max. We're adding walk and landscape adjacent to Quail Road. Add walk and tree lawn to Wildfire Court. Widening of Clover Basin Road, including bike lanes, pedestrian lanes, and landscaping. The addition of the roundabout at Clover Basin Drive and Larkspur, well, that will help our community, but also the rest of the community, as we heard traffic are a big concern, especially for neighbors coming in and out of their neighborhoods. We're providing shared access for adjacent property to the west. And we're also adding bicycle connection from Quail Road to Clover Basin Drive. Additionally, while the annexation doesn't talk about the number of affordable housing, the applicant is committed to working with Habitat for Humanity, provided with affordable housing on-site, which will be addressed at the time of site plan. We actually have David Emerson from St. Braine Habitat for Humanity come speak for a moment too.
Good evening, Mayor and council. David Emerson at 1152 Twin Peaks Circle in Longmont, Colorado. I'm also the executive director for Habitat for Humanity. I understand there is some confusion on whether Habitat's involved in this, whether they're not involved in this, so I did want to be here to answer questions and speak to that. So I have been working with Tyler Erickson with the development team since about last year. One of the big parts of my job is obviously finding land. So when I see something on the development log, I reach out to the developer and ask if they would consider Habitat or for-sale product. It's something we need in the community, and obviously, so I'm advocating for that, whether it is attainable or affordable or Habitat, really trying to get in front of as many developers as I can. Some are receptive to a meeting, and others aren't, many aren't. So last year, Tyler and I started a meeting. He did give me the time to just think about where Habitat could be involved in this. We went back and forth with lot dimensions, that type of thing, and he was able to incorporate that roughly in a concept plan. So obviously, it is our hope to be a part of this project, should it go forward. But I also want to be clear that we do not have a agreement in place, and that is typical at this stage. We're very early in the process. I would be surprised if we did have an agreement, but I did want to be clear and transparent that a lot has to happen before this is a reality. And so at this point, the simple answer to, is Habitat involved in this, is we don't know. But again, I'm here to answer questions, and thank you for your time, so.
Thank you, David. Ryan McBreen, Norris Design, again. And I guess finally, I'd like to point out that tonight's not the end of the development process, right? Tonight, we're, you're not guaranteeing any development on this project, you're just proving the parameters in which we can go forward with the future development. We still have to finalize the annexation agreement with the city, and we also still would have to go through the site plan process and the subdivision process, all of which includes overall site plan, architecture, landscape architecture, traffic studies, and further detail that you all and all staff have to review and approve for us. So at this, oh, excuse me, one more slide. And as noted, we meet the approval criteria. We've demonstrated that through our review cycle with staff, providing all the necessary information to prove out that we do meet the approval criteria for this concept plan and the annexation agreement. At this time, I'd like to invite the applicant, Tyler Erickson, to come up and speak. Thank you.
Thank you, staff. Thank you, Ryan from Norris, and thank you, David Emerson, and everybody's time today. Tyler Erickson with Vista Residential Partners. I wanted to zoom out a little bit tonight and maybe take a macroeconomic perspective of what we're all doing here, and maybe address the elephant in the room that's been here the whole time and why apartments. It can be an overbearing conversation, but there's some data behind the why. So this is dealing, the two top slides are population, and that's the supply side. So we deal with that. Fortunately or unfortunately, Colorado in the upper left, the Denver metro area's been growing at twice the rate of the nation. I took a quick peek at Longmont's Housing Needs Assessment done last year, or into 2023. Longmont's grown at 14%, so that's 5% more than the Denver metro area. So we're loading supply. We have people moving here. We have a very desirable community. The next, the top right slide is employment growth. You guys keep growing your business community, more people are going to work here, they're either going to live in the community, or they're going to drive in, one or the other. So again, that one above the national rate. So Colorado's popular, Colorado's growing. The next address is on the supply side. So up here, this is an estimate, and they range by whomever did it, 1.5 million to 5.5 million units short nationally. That's just housing units, that's for rent, for sale. Colorado, you guys probably can't quite read that, but Colorado's 105,000 units short. And that's based on 2022 data, our populations, again, that's assuming a zero population growth. That's what the population we have today, we're still 105,000 units short. Per Longmont's Housing Needs Assessment, 14,000 rental units short. And that's not incorporating your growth. So you guys are short 14,000 rental units, and that's across the spectrum, affordable and market rate. So what happens when that all adds up? It's a massive mismatch of our population and our current housing supply. So that leads me to the unfortunate next slide, which is what the reality of anybody who's looking for a home or a rental place to live is facing. So I think the most impactful slide is the graph. We had a massive bifurcation in the cost of rent and the cost of own. It's pretty unfortunate, but the cost of housing has gone sky-high, not only in this nation, but specifically in Colorado and specifically in Boulder County. It's a very desirable place for people to move. So on the left side, it's just a comparison of the average cost of a home in a five-mile radius of Longmont and the average rents in the five-mile radius of Longmont, so averages compared to averages. The difference there is $2,400 a month to buy in Longmont at $700,000, or to rent at Longmont, and the average rent of $1,800 a unit. So you're asking people who want to buy a home to pay a $2,400 premium just to buy a home here. That's unattainable for most people. That takes, what is it, salary, 703,000, and this is 30%. So I'm just solving to a 30% rule. Nobody's spending any more than 30% of their income on housing costs. It's $168,000 is what it costs to afford $700,000 in Longmont. The median household income for two people in Longmont is $89,000. It's close to half. So let's play with some real numbers here, that's just averages. Let's assume $500,000. And I took a quick look at Zillow before I came here tonight, there are 50 listings under $500,000 in Longmont. There are 250 listings total, so 20% of your market is $500,000 or under. Even at $500,000, it's $116,000 in the salary, still way above the median household income for two people in this city. The spread to rent to own, $500,000, is still $1,000 a month. So I'm going to hit some high points of the Longmont Housing Needs Assessment. Again, the shortage of 14,000 units, I think, is imperative to address. This quote struck me, so I included it. Overall, purchasing power at current interest rates increased by just 12% from 2013 to 2022, whereas the median for-sale home price increased 142%. So people's purchasing power grew by 12, the cost of housing grew by 142. In 2013, a 10% down payment required 43% of a household's median annual income compared to 74% today. Right, that's 22, so it's worse. The average homebuyer age is now 38 years old in the United States. So I know we talk a lot about these renters and who are they? They're everybody. It's anybody under the age of 38. It's become immensely unaffordable for the young generation to buy a home. So do we need housing? Absolutely, all types, affordable, for-sale, for rent, market rate, we need it all. We need all we can get. Otherwise, our state's just going to become Californian, unlivable. People won't be able to afford to move here. People won't be able to afford to move here. So when we talk about all those, there's a bunch of tools that we can use to solve these. Unfortunately, they take public funding, so market rate doesn't, we fund ourselves. But if you do an affordable project, you need to either get funding from the federal government, from the state, or from the city, and none of those things are happening. I took a quick look at the Housing Needs Assessment. Longmont has 153 owner-occupied units. That's it, that's insane. 153, that's it. So I would like to think that that would be produced more if it could be done so easily, but it can't. I have plenty of friends who do what I do in the affordable realm, they do it in the for-sale realm, and I talk to them a lot about this issue. The reason is because it's so, so difficult to get the funding. I'm a Denver resident candidly, and we had initiative on our ballot this year to provide $200 million a year in affordable housing construction, and it was voted down by the taxpayers. So if the money's not coming from the federal government, which it's not with this administration, if it's not coming from the state, and it's not coming from the taxpayers, where's the money to do these projects? That's the big question in the room. I wish we could all just solve this housing affordability crisis by building a bunch of for-sale, but who's going to do it? Where's the money going to come from? That's the question in front of us today. So because of all this data that I've laid out there, and the $2,400 a month it costs in a premium to buy a home, that's why we're advocating for rental housing. It's attainable for people that make less than $120,000 a year. Even a $500,000 home doesn't hit that. So I talked to a couple affordable friends of mine and asked them, why would this site not, why didn't anybody offer on this? Why didn't a for-rent or a for-sale group or an affordable group offer on this? The immediate answer from an affordable group was it's not in a qualified census tract in the city of Longmont. So to get the funding they need to do an affordable project, it needs to be in a qualified census tract. So that was just a pretty blatant answer from them.
Can you explain that for our residents?
Sure. A qualified census tract is defined by HUD, the housing from the federal government, and they pick areas where they would like to revitalize development. So they give an advantage to the funding mechanism for affordable developers if they are in a qualified census tract. It's defined by the federal government. That's the best answer I can give. So as Steve mentioned, these brokers talked to 183 developers. So this wasn't like a, you know, closed auction or anything like that. This was, the market saw this, and the market responded. The market, they didn't get any affordable offers, they didn't receive any for-sale offers. So I would like to think that if this, if somebody wanted to do affordable housing, they would have made an offer to the brokers. And that's quite a spread, 183 groups is no small feat. So in closing, you know, Longmont needs housing, I mean, the state of Colorado needs housing, this nation needs housing. We have a really good example down the road of what happens when you restrict housing. It places the housing burden on the neighboring communities to absorb as long as Longmont has in the past decade for Boulder. You guys have become the housing unit for people that work in Boulder, and that's happening now to you. So you guys are at a crossroads. Firestone is now your bedroom community. Everyone's driving in from Firestone because they can afford to live there. They can afford to buy a home in Firestone, and they're all clogging up your roads, Highway 52 coming in and out at rush hour. So we can plan for, when we look at the planning that Longmont's done to date, you know, we're just following the comp plan. As I look at these different municipalities I work in, these are my guiding documents. I go to you guys to say, what do you want built and where? And we're just following, you know, your code that you laid out for us. The site has been designated residential mixed-use for a long time, and we're following the same criteria that you guys set forth in your comp plan and your zoning. We feel that we've met all the annexation criteria. We've made some moves to lessen the impacts that we can to the neighbors to our best extent. And so we ask for City Council to support this annexation and provide much-needed future resident housing. Thank you guys for your time. Thank you, staff, for all the effort you've put into this, and thank you to the applicants for coming to speak tonight.
Thank you. So our presentations are over.
Yeah.
Counselor, Mayor Protim Hidog.
Thank you, Mayor. So I saw in the concept plan that you were looking to keep it at 35 feet. Was that presented to us at the first? I don't think that was. So then, is this the first time that residents will be hearing about the 35-feet height? I don't know who can answer that for me.
Councilmember Ryan McBreen, Norris Design. No, that's not. This has been in our application, that's been through all the hearings, so Planning and Zoning Board or Commission heard that.
So they've heard this?
Yes, correct. This is not a new, this is not, nothing new.
Okay. And then, and then the other question I had was around the adjacent lot. I know these, these landowners do not own that parcel, but I've heard, you know, through the grapevine that there's a possibility that there'll be a request for an annexation. Has anyone reached out to kind of, to look at what path are they having moving forward and what kind of, how can a development kind of, I guess I'm looking for compatibility, so it's a smooth transition from one to the other, to the surrounding neighborhood?
Absolutely. That's really important to me as the developer. I think looking at this whole parcel as like a large rectangle, that was my first thought was we need to know what they're doing so that we can accommodate. We're in front of them, so we've already heard clearly from staff that there will be no three, there won't be an additional third point of access on Clover Basin, and so we're taking two of those, so I have to coordinate with the neighbor. We don't know much about what they're doing, they've been a little unresponsive in their answers to me, but candidly, we are trying to mainly work on that access point, the second one in the purple closer to the two-story zoning height, because that's the main access area into their site. And I would like to have a continual plan as to what our project looks like and how it flows into theirs.
Okay. And then, you know, I know that it's listed, 310 would be the max. Is there any discussion on, you know, a range or going lower? That density was a huge concern to every single person that I've met with or had contact with. So, you know, kind of looking at, what are some of the lower possibilities where you could still, you know, I understand you're still running a business, you still have to turn a profit, but kind of looking more at a range rather than?
So yeah, that range is going to be up in the 300-unit range.
In the 300?
Yeah. There's, we have to make them financially feasible.
Yeah, no, I understand. Okay. And then I know that there was not, you know, that it had stated in the slide, working with Habitat. In working with Habitat, in the, you know, in the event that it does work out, it can pan out, is this land going to be owned by Habitat? How is that, is it leased or what would be the?
No, my preference would be to, I think in Colorado, we have to do a nominal amount, so we have to sell it for a dollar. So I would sell it for a dollar, so it'd be a donation.
Okay, okay.
And I think you had some other questions about location and are they for rent, or is that someone else?
That was, you know what, I think that might have been me. So looking at, and I see that on the map, it would be on that part right next to Quail.
So Habitat's product is a two-story townhome, for-sale. So to clarify, for-sale from Habitat. Because they are two-story, we're incorporating them on the northern boundary.
And is this also included in the 310 number?
Yes.
Okay. And then approximately, how many homes would be able to fit in that space?
So that's what I don't know yet.
Okay.
And there's, I'll use an example, there's a hearing a couple weeks ago, you guys switched to parking maximums versus parking minimums. My parking ratio trying to meet the city code was 1.9 per unit. I can be comfortable around 1.6 or 1.7. So that change in legislation, all of a sudden opened up more site area. So had that happened, say I came in here and committed to a number of Habitat homes, that could open up more, right? So, and I don't know what the public street requirements are going to be, there's just a lot, I don't know how big our detention pond needs to be from your engineering department. This is very, very preliminary. So as soon as I get to working the site parameters and the street widths, that's when we'll be able to tell how many Habitat homes we can accommodate.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Counselor McCoy.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. So you're telling us that there's no flexibility at all in the, in the number of units to make this happen. You can see that the crowd here is concerned about that. They, they want to see, every email I've received and people that I've had a conversation with, they were talking about, they came up here first, you know, when they spoke about this, they weren't against the development, you know, they knew that there was likely at some point some sort of infill. Where they were hesitant to support this was the, the whole total number of units. It's, it's not even some sort of middle point between six and 18. And that seems to, to make them feel that there's, there's a disconnect there of compatibility with the surrounding area. And, and I, I wonder if there's some way that you can look at this in a different light and, and again, because I can't see how this would be something that would be beneficial to all the folks that are in this room right now, the other folks that are probably not in this room but are emailing us and contacting us and concerned about this. And it just seems that somehow we've got to, you know, we've got to come to some sort of common ground. And having it at the max 18 is not coming to some sort of common ground. And I understand your position, but, but there's a certain point where, where folks really, that we understand the need, but you know, I wasn't here, I wasn't elected to do the bidding for folks that might come in and, and invest in this big sort of project, and not talking about the owners of the property right now. You know, they're, they interviewed you, they chose you, but you're the people that are going to be coming in and actually doing the dollar investment of the project, those folks are not the, are not who I represent here in Longmont. And I, and I really want to stress that somehow, if you want my support on this, we've got to have, and not, I'm just one of seven, but that you've got to come into some sort of common ground with the community, and whether that's 10 units per acre or 12, but it really can't, in my head, I think it's just way too much at 18. And I, and I'm just trying to be honest with you. Okay, because I think that's, and you were honest with us where you were at, but there's got to be some give and take here, and I don't think that, looking around the community, they, they want something better. You know, I was on planning zoning when, when Prospect came in, and you know, we looked at that as a community, and just every time you hear somebody talk about what good development was, they think that, even when it's in its most dense areas. And, and I think we want to somehow do better. So that's all I have to say, but I'd like to see something in a more moderate level of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. To piggyback off of Counselor McCoy, first of all, I'd just like to say thank you, thank you to the property owners for coming in and speaking, so it was good to hear your perspectives as well. Thank you for all the people who are here tonight. Tyler, I do have to agree that I hope that we can come to some type of middle ground with this property, because for me, and I know this is your business, this is what you do, I think it's kind of hard for me to say that this is a really, really good property. I appreciate that Habitat for Humanity is involved, but we don't know how many units or anything, and it would be good to see at least an estimate of what you all can have some type of discussion and what you will be willing to, to do if there was a reduction of the amount of units other than, you know, the maximum of 310, including the Habitat for Humanity. So if you only have five of those townhomes and the rest are, you know, you're the apartments, then I don't think that's a compromise, but I would like to know more if you can maybe spend some time and talk and figure that out. What would that look like? What would be feasible for you to make this work, you know? And I think that's what we would, as council, would like to know, what would be feasible? What is, where is your in-between that you're willing to, what you would be willing to do? I know you're not in the business of pleasing everybody, no one can please everyone, right? We would be gazillionaires if we could. But we are talking about what makes up Longmont are these people. And so if there's some kind of way that you can just think about and have that conversation and figure out what you can do, then that way we can talk to the community and see what would be feasible, and we all have to come to some type of middle ground here.
So what I'll say to that is, we've done that analysis, and it's based on the information that's provided in your comp plan, and it's up to 18 deuse breaker, so that's how we financially underwrote the project. And so if this project was limited to, say, 12 deuse per acre or 15, it's not financially feasible based on the negotiations I've had with the land sellers. So that's a whole different ballgame, renegotiation of land price, everything else. So when we go into these projects, I look at the governing documents from the city, and that is your comp plan, and it says 18 deuse per acre, so I'm just following the path that was laid out in front of us. So to your answer of, you know, can we go look at a range? I've already looked at that. That was the 18 deuse per acre that we looked at that's in your comprehensive plan.
Okay. Counselor Crist. I'm sorry, we've had microphone problems, and now everybody's got a different seat number and a different microphone number, so.
Did you want to go first?
No.
Okay. Cool. Thank you, Mayor Peck. Hello, Ward Two. It's nice to meet you all. Thanks for coming out tonight. I wanted to clarify a tech issue as well, just procedurally. I didn't have access to my city email account until after being sworn in tonight, so if you emailed me there, I have now seen it, but don't take it personally if I have not responded. I will assure you that having served on the Planning and Zoning Commission directly before this appointment, I did hear this very similar hearing about a month ago and reviewed all of the comments and heard all of the comments made at that point. So I will gladly listen tonight if there's new, if there's new information and comments to share, but I've heard and paid attention to that before. So again, apologies if you have not gotten an email response from me and hoped for one. I will do my best to catch up on that inbox as, you know, after this meeting. So thank you for your patience there. Second thing, Tyler, I appreciate the context that you offered here, and hello again. We absolutely do need more housing, and stopping development or, you know, trying to, you know, dramatically change the density for some of the projects here completely changes the price point and, and the affordability of even market rate. You know, what that market is, is what it will bear. That said, how we build really matters. And we talked a little bit in the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing about, you know, conscientious design and what goes into that. And so I want to build off of Counselor McCoy's comment, you know, Prospect does get a lot of attention nationally sometimes, too, and that's partly because of how it's built, it's partly because of the blending of densities that it did very smoothly, and because of the, let's say, innovative designs that went into that. And, you know, Counselor McCoy, you said even in its most dense areas, the design really matters. And so I just want to anchor to that here, that it's not always density that wins out, it's design. And that's actually, you know, not set fully by the market. That's your team's job and our code.
Absolutely.
And so I guess I wanted to ask, since I'm wearing a new hat now, and I can ask some things maybe that were not as kosher on the Planning and Zoning Commission, you know, can you walk us through how you think about design and how you've navigated some of these tensions in other projects?
Yeah, so two-part question. So the first part is this, and this is going to draw a bad reaction. This is not actually very dense. 18 deuse per acre is lower than most rural zoning in northern Colorado. I've done projects up in Fort Collins, Loveland, out in the middle of the field, it's 25 deuse breaker. That's a typical three-story garden, you know, zoning is 25 deuse per acre. Actually, Longmont's the only city I've seen anything less than 20 in for multi, that allows multifamily in. Usually it's 20 to 25. So I'll start there. Second part is because the 18 deuse zoning- Second part is, because the eighteen de-use zoning, we have a lot more land use. You know, if this is seventeen acres times twenty-five, I mean, you're up in the four hundred and fifty unit range probably. So that's a massive amount of three-story buildings. So to deal with the less zoning and the less intensity of use in the eighteen de-use per acre, we're going to have to spread those buildings out a lot more. So we have a lot more opportunity to not design just a box and put it right against the neighbors, against Quail, which is a move we've already made. So there's been a lot of conversations around, you know, maxing and maxing and maxing. We've already dropped density on the north side of the site. So to accommodate two stories, to accommodate that transition to the neighborhood. So those are the parts and things we think about. It's peaked roofs versus flat. Flat roofs look more urban, more dense, so we can do peaked roofs to match the neighbors' houses. So there's a lot of things we can do through design and spreading the buildings out so it doesn't feel like a monolithic building. So your second part of your question about what have I done in other projects? It's spacing the buildings, it's neighborhood architecture and character. So we go look at, you know, what are the architecture styles of the Schlegel neighborhood? You know, our architects take a deep dive into the historical use, the historical site in Longmont's kind of design and flavor, and we try to match that as best as we can to the neighborhood. That's the best way to incorporate a project is to look at the design styles that have come. And again, it's done over thirty years, so it's hard to match exactly. But we try to do our best to look at what are the surrounding uses and how can we accommodate that so it doesn't look like it stands out so much.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying that. And then, you know, something we talked about extensively in the Planning and Zoning Commission was just the relative densities to other areas. And obviously, single-family is on the north side and the south side of this property directly. Diagonally to the southwest is a higher density than what you're proposing, correct?
Correct.
Do you happen to know the number approximately of that?
I don't. You're speaking of Vera West.
Correct, the Vera West property. So I guess it's slightly off direct adjacency, but it's across from Airport Road and Clover Basin, next to where Ziggy's is going to go, next to Bearded Brewer.
If I were to guess based on what I know through driving that, because they have a mix of three-story and two-story kind of cottage-type units, so I'd guess it's a very similar density.
Okay. I have two other questions that we didn't really touch on in the Planning and Zoning Commission that I wanted to talk with you first before maybe I chat with staff about this. This is an unusual project, at least from our perspective, in terms of the adjacent property that's not within your annexation control here, but that's also moving through the annexation process with the city right now. Have you faced that kind of situation before in other properties or other projects where you have another parcel that is moving through development process, whether it's annexation or not, but a kind of a parallel development process, just slightly off from the timing, where something you do might impact them or something they do could negatively impact your development if already kind of moving forward?
All the time, not in annexation, so I appreciate the clarification. So annexation, no. In every one of my other projects, yes. There's always an adjacent use that you need to collaborate with.
And walk us through, like, maybe ideally when you have two maybe similar types of either mixed use or housing multifamily properties, what kinds of discussions, coordination do you go through there? And how is that helpful or a hindrance in that process?
I wouldn't say a hindrance, I'd say helpful. So the conversations I've had on this specific parcel is mainly around ingress and egress, right, access to their site. There's been conversations around drainage, you know, the site slightly flows east, so their drainage is coming into our site, so I need to accommodate for that. And then mainly where are they laying out their buildings so it doesn't look really odd when I have, you know, I don't have any buildings against the far west side of the site, it's a road to provide access. So if they have a bunch of units backing up to a road and I don't, it's going to look a little odd. So it's looking at their site plan, and then I take their site plan and I start to look at it holistically incorporating it ours.
That assumes that the site plan is advanced enough that you can do it within the timeline you're working with too, right?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. I'll have a question for staff on some coordination later on that, just giving you a heads up. So then the last question I have at this point, and then I want to hear from fellow council members and then from the public as well. When moving through the annexation process and kind of developing this concept plan, obviously you laid out the rationale for the multifamily, for the zoning choice that you made here. Did you ever consider any different zoning district in your consideration there?
We did not, no. This is the density we need and the project works, and so there's no reason to ask for a more intense use. This is the least impactful use above single-family zoning. It's the next step up. Otherwise, it's just single-family zoning at six de-use per acre. The next step up is residential mixed neighborhood. There is no zone district between there, so we didn't feel the need or that it was appropriate to do fifty-five feet, and we didn't want the density there. We don't feel it's appropriate.
If you had hypothetically a more flexible zoning district that still allowed you to build the density that you needed for the market to pencil or for the financials to pencil, but gave you more flexibility, say, like a PUD or a planned unit development, would that change how you'd approach design at all? And I know this is speculative, but I'm curious how you might think about this different, and again, I'm asking you on the fly here, but.
Yeah, I'm trying to think about the PUDs I've worked through.
Sure, because that's where, and I'll just share my thinking on this. To Councilor McCoy's point, you know, Prospect came about because it was a PUD. The other Quail Road part of Longmont across from the museum and the rec center is also partially a PUD there. And we have a few other examples throughout the city where there have actually been some really thoughtful, yet still like relatively dense parcels and developments that have happened. And that really goes to my point before on, like, design really matters when we're trying to get density right.
So for the PUD process, I'll just reference my experience working in Denver. Denver has done away with PUDs because it's an administrative nightmare for the city to process through. So that's my only experience. Usually PUDs are for very specific, potentially mixed-use projects where you want to incorporate a bunch of uses where they couldn't exist, say, in a housing-zoned area. That's typically where I've seen PUDs applied.
All right, thank you. No further questions right now.
Councilor Christ. And let's keep track of our time here because we don't want to keep these people here till eleven o'clock, nor do I want to be here till eleven o'clock. You're a different microphone.
That's because I rang in first.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. So my first question is, regardless of any potential relationship with Habitat for Humanity, based on the concept plan, you'd be required to build two-story housing along that one perimeter, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So for those people who say that just because we don't have a contract with Habitat for Humanity doesn't mean that they'd be allowed to just disregard their transition from the two-story to three-story heights. I'd just like to point that out. Another thing that I'm curious about, and this is, feel free maybe not to comment on this in a sense, but if you look up, if you Google what eighteen dwelling units per acre looks like, it's not some sort of monolithic massive apartment structure, okay? There are currently, mostly on the east side of town, I would say, and there's some on the west side of town, condominium complexes that look very similar to the product that would be offered by this developer as a for-rent product. Why can't you not build the same product, exactly the same, but offered as for-sale? And I assume that's because of a business model, not necessarily because of a difference in construction techniques or density.
The construction techniques, yes, there's a big difference in home builders versus apartment builders.
I mean condominiums.
Condominiums, yeah, condo defect law. Colorado needs to change that. We are short-changed. It's one of the reasons you don't see middle-market housing in our state. I would love to build condos, the risk of being sued is enormous, the insurance is enormous. That's why you don't see very many condos being developed.
Thank you. I assumed that was what the answer was going to be. And I know that the city council has been very specific about speaking against what our current defects law is in the state and wanting to open that up for more condominium for-sale opportunities for people within the city that would look no different than the product that is being proposed right now. The only difference being that it's for-rent versus for-sale.
Correct.
Okay? Again, not monolithic apartment complexes. He just said it as well in the sense that he's going to have to spread it out, right? Because this, again, is residential mixed neighborhood, not residential multifamily. And residential multifamily is where you get up to, I believe, thirty-five.
Fifty-five.
In Longmont? Is it up to fifty-five in Longmont? Okay.
So it's twenty feet shorter.
Well, that's the height. I'm talking about the dwelling units per acre.
Oh, the de-use per acre.
Yeah, the de-use per acre. And so eighteen, yes, is capping it out because it is a little bit, I would say, disingenuous in the presentation to say that, oh, we're going to cap it at three-ten. Well, seventeen times eighteen is three hundred and six. So seventeen point three-four, I assume, gets you to three-ten. So of course you're capping it out at eighteen dwelling units per acre at that point. So saying that you could build any more without asking for more density is a little disingenuous. But that's my point on that one. So I just want to point out to folks that generally speaking, I don't believe that this proposed density is out of scope. And my next question for illustrative purposes is not to you, I'm sorry. It's to the city staff in the sense that we are now underway with, I can't remember what house pad's called now. True North, True North, right? These are truly affordable and attainable for-sale product. What is the density per acre on that?
You know, I can't remember that off the top of my head. Grant, can you get that for me?
I know, I know, it's probably at least at the mixed neighborhood level.
It's close. So we have.
It's above, okay.
Let me do this real quick. I think it's sixteen acres.
That's a hundred and sixty-some units?
Hundred and eighty-four.
Hundred and eighty-four?
Hundred and eighty.
Hundred and eighty-five units?
It's a hundred and eighty-five units divided by sixteen acres, eleven point five-six, eleven or twelve, I think, is close.
And so doesn't that get into mixed neighborhood?
I think it does.
And also, if you look at the spacing between the properties for that eleven to twelve acres per unit, they're right up on each other. Yeah, you get to own it, but you don't get much else, you know? And if you look at eighteen dwelling units per acre in these three-story apartment complex concepts, there's a lot of green space. There's more green space than in True North, in my opinion. So you're trading one for another here, folks. And again, we heard in the housing needs assessment that the city commissioned that we were fourteen thousand rental units short. And so for folks that don't understand why the city council has been not necessarily promoting but allowing a lot of apartment buildings to be approved, that's where it is, is we've got our numbers and we're going on numbers, not on emotions. And I'm sorry if, you know, that doesn't vibe with you, but that's just kind of where the, I guess, understanding from city council and city staff is, is that we're looking at numbers, and when we hear an overwhelming majority of surrounding neighbors' comment, we do take that into consideration, and I think you're hearing it amongst the council. So those are my thoughts and comments, and thank you for your answers to my questions.
Real quick, I said eleven point five-six, it's eleven point two-five, so, close.
Councilor Christ.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so the vote has already been taken, but just for clarification, when we're talking about urbanization, I'm looking at the law dictionary, and it says at least seventy-five percent of the population must be involved in non-agricultural activities for the settlement to be called urban. Okay, so that's the discussion that we were having. And there was concern about the county streets that are north of that property in the Schlegel subdivision. They don't, you know, they don't have sidewalks or curbs, and so there was concern about traffic there. Thank you so much, Tyler Erickson, for patiently explaining all of this to us. I have a few other questions too. So when we're talking about thirty-five feet, are we talking two-story or are we talking three-story?
Both.
Okay, so you plan on building both. But you have not yet filed an obstruction certificate with FAA, has not come back and said, we find that this is free of obstruction.
No, I've spoken with the FAA. The FAA needs finished floor heights to measure how tall your buildings are. We don't have those yet, but generally in speaking with the FAA, there's no obstruction problem here.
Okay.
Particularly at thirty-five feet.
Okay. Now, we were talking about, you know, mixed or missing middle. And we were also talking about, or you mentioned, you know, if you're below the age of thirty-eight, you need apartments to live in or that's what you can afford, okay? But the truth is that our population is aging, and so one of the things with apartments is people are building them without elevators. So it kind of messes up that cycle of, you know, you start in an apartment and you end up in an apartment. But our aging population can't end up in an apartment because there are no elevators. So, you know, just north of where you're talking about, there are developments that are senior patio homes. And so I'm wondering, are you putting in elevators? I'm guessing with three stories, maybe not.
In three stories, no, but there are codes that require us to provide ADA access. So there are units that are accessible without the need of stairs.
Okay, so that'd be sort of like.
The whole ground floor.
Okay, ground floor units, okay. Now, okay, so if you have three hundred and ten units, how many Habitat for Humanity units could you build on that same property?
That's what I don't know yet.
It would be about thirty-seven with the twelve percent IZO.
Yeah, to meet our affordable requirement at the twelve percent, I'd do that.
And you would want to meet the whole twelve percent of thirty-seven units, affordable?
I'm going to try to meet as much of the affordable requirement through onsite with Habitat as I can. As I've stated previously, this is the information we have to date. I don't know how our lots are going to look, I don't know how big our detention pond needs to be, I don't know how wide the streets are going to be that the city's going to require. So there's a lot of information that go into, quote-unquote, "the mixer" that results in the unit count that I can achieve. Now, we have a lot of land space here, and the parking reduction or the parking maximums do help. And so the changing conditions, I can't answer that unfortunately.
Right, right. We know this piece of property is going to be developed, but I think what we're discussing is what and how. And it's very important that we have more attainable housing and that we have affordable housing. We've been very frustrated in trying to incentivize that type of building. And I very much appreciate Councilor Popkin bringing up the idea of a PUD because that is one way that we can negotiate a lot of mixed housing in one area. I think House Pad or True North exercised a PUD, talking about, you know, down in Prospect. So some of these really come out with unique aspects and fulfill a segment that we're trying to reach. It was in the Times Call on Saturday that it's the missing attainable housing that is actually driving up housing prices. And this is, you know, if we had more supply, it would bring prices down. So in talking with planning, they're saying that we are basically at our vacancy rate is between four and five percent, which is actually, you know, if we look at it as a leading indicator, that's kind of a good pivot point to say, okay, that's the golden percentage we want to stay for apartments. Maybe now is the time to add more attainable and, you know, for-sale units. So I think something that Mayor Protim brought up last session, and this may have been on the fourteenth, was that we just need some assurances that we are going to have more for sale there and more that's affordable or attainable for the public. And so are you, is that something that you would be willing to negotiate with our planning department?
I mean, I'm held to the twelve percent affordable regardless of what I do. It's an ordinance that's in your city, so I have to provide that regardless.
But we are particularly interested in having the units versus fee and lieu?
Yeah, that, again, your guys' fees change every year. Two thousand and twenty-five, they're going to go up, twenty-sixth, they're going to go up. By the time I break ground, I don't know what I'm working with until I get to the end. So again, committing to a negotiated number, we're absorbing the twelve percent as best we can, and that's the best I can do at this stage. This is all very preliminary.
Right, okay. But you would be agreeable to have those kind of assurances in our annexation contract?
Yeah, I believe it isn't in your annexation contract by the twelve percent affordable.
Yeah.
Okay, but in building them or with Habitat for Humanity?
I cannot commit to building or paying fee and lieu at a certain. I cannot commit to building or paying fee and lieu at a certain ratio at this point, again, it's too, it's too ambiguous.
Okay, okay. But that discussion could be continued?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Mm-hmm.
Couple more things, then we're going to let you sit down.
Go for it.
First of all, to the public that, uh, the fourteen, you said fourteen thousand units? Um, we discussed that, that, that housing assessment from the Denver Metro area was brought to the, uh, Dr. Cog, Denver Regional Council of Governments, uh, with forty directors there. And, um, a lot of the directors did not accept that based upon what they said was flawed, uh, math and flawed. So for the residents, we don't have a land to bill fourteen thousand units, so, uh, bring that anxiety, anxiety down, because that's not going to happen. Um, so if you built three hundred and ten and the twelve percent, uh, was about thirty-seven units, if it went Habitat for Humanity, was, were those thirty-seven units subtracted from the three hundred and ten?
No, they're included in.
So it'd be three forty-seven?
No, no, they're included in the three-ten.
Okay.
I, I, by the zoning, I can't build more than three hundred and eleven point four units, so.
But I guess my point is, if Habitat built the thirty-seven, that would make two hundred and seventy-three units that you would be building.
Correct, yes.
Not three hundred and ten.
Yeah, it's not three hundred and ten plus Habitat.
Exactly. So I just wanted to put that out there, that we're not adding that onto it. Uh, basically, that's all I've got. If you were building two hundred and seventy-three units, though, then they would, Habitat would just build thirty-three units instead of thirty-seven, so. So I am all about getting some affordable housing in there for sale, and if you cannot build until summer of twenty twenty-five, I think some, uh, construction defects laws are going to be dropped, and hopefully you can do condominiums.
It's going to be twenty twenty-six, so maybe they will.
Okay, great.
Twenty twenty-five now.
Yeah, and to the residents who've been listening here, honestly, the only affordable for sale that we have been, uh, been able to build has been with the government's help. We cannot, we cannot expect the developers to come in and build all of this. Historically, that's never happened. It's always been the government that has helped. So, um, we're working on it with the LHA as fast as we can, but we need help from the developers, which we're just keep pushing that IZO. So, um, thank you for your presentations. We are going, whoops, Councilor Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. I just want to ring in because of a motion made earlier, or at the very beginning, basically, of this meeting. It's been over an hour since we've opened this item, and so I was asking if we were going to continue or reconsider the motion that was made earlier.
We have to have public invited to be heard first.
I believe we technically only have to open it.
I think we have to, we, if we open it, we have to listen. Cow, counsel? Legal? Legal?
I, I can take this, Mayor Peck. Uh, Mayor Peck, uh, council members, Jeremy Turell, Assistant City Attorney. The statute just says, open the public hearing and start testimony, so I, I think we have met our one-hour requirement. Um, whether, I think that it's, it's up to council to make discretion if you want to have public hearing at this point or continue it and have it at a later point.
Okay.
Um, and then certainly we, we still need some sort of direction from council in terms of what you would like staff to do if we do continue it.
Okay. Uh, Councilor Yarborough, are you going to make your motion now, or are we going to?
I'm sure there's people who want to speak.
Yeah.
But if we're not going to make a dis-
I, I think we should.
If we're just taking, okay, are we just going to hear?
It, it's up to if you want to, so Councilor Yarborough? Okay. Uh, Councilor Popkin?
Thank you, Mayor Peck. Um, I think we should, there have been many, many people who have sat through the three-and-a-half hours that we've already had tonight, um, and most of whom are, are my residents. And I would personally like to make sure of that, even if we're going to entertain, uh, Councilmember Yarborough's motion, that how we approach the next steps after that might be informed by what we hear from the public.
Okay.
So if we're going to entertain that, I would still very much appreciate hearing from the public. I would encourage them, given the comments we've already made, and you know where, uh, this council is currently thinking in multiple ways, I'd encourage you to maybe, uh, consider if you can be more succinct on certain points, if you know we have already asked about that or clarified some of that. But other than that, I look forward to hearing from them.
Okay.
And I would vote against anything that would truncate, uh, that part of the public hearing.
Okay, I now will open the public, uh, comment for, um, Resolution twenty twenty-five-oh-nine, and I would, as I call on you, if the person before you has mentioned what you are going to mention, can you just say, I'm good? Um, but if you want to come up and continually say the same thing over and over and over again, be mindful of the time of the other residents. So the first one on the list is Tracy Ibanez. I hope I said that right? Good.
Okay. Okay. I'm Tracy Ibanez, and I live at fourteen oh-nine Clover Creek Drive, and I'm a resident of Clover Creek, and my house backs up to Clover Basin. Um, I could talk about traffic concerns, I could talk about density concerns, but I really want to talk about, um, I understand that the land is going to be developed, I encourage the land to be developed. This is not, uh, not in my backyard, it's just what are we developing on this land? And, uh, the pleasure of meeting a lot of the city council members, whether it was at coffee or chatting, that sort of thing. And, um, I've listened, I've learned, I know a little bit more than nothing now, but certainly I'm no expert. Uh, one thing, though, that I did learn is that I don't have a lot of control over what's built in Longmont. I'm a single resident. I did learn that you all don't have all the control over what's built in Longmont because you have constraints from state and federal and zoning and et cetera, et cetera. But that is why this parcel is so important. Um, you do actually have control over what is built on this parcel of land because it's an annexation. So you have control over what we put here. And for that reason, I mean, I drive around my area and I see apartment buildings going up everywhere. So I do feel like apartments, as of right now, are pretty good. They're getting covered. They are not even all filled up yet, and there's more being built, and there's more in the pipeline from other places. And you won't have control over a lot of other pieces of land. Land is not infinite. This is a, the infill that we have is filling up, and we need to pause and really be thoughtful about what we are putting in, in the places where you have control. And what I believe that we need, and I've heard that it's very difficult, but some kind of attainable for purchase housing or something for the elderly community, I don't think we need another apartment building. And I just, for that reason, don't feel like this developer is the right developer because all that they can develop is apartment buildings. There is no option for condos if we have this developer come. This is your chance to be picky and to do what's best for the city of Longmont. You get very few of these chances because, like I said, this is an annexation. You can choose not to annex with this proposal and wait for something better to come along. And I just strongly encourage you, for the residents of this great city, to say no to the annexation tonight, as is. We all want the land developed, but this isn't the right development for Longmont in this particular parcel. And I really, like I said, have learned a lot, appreciated all of the, that you've taught me, that you were willing to listen, and I hope that tonight you're willing to listen to us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tracy. Laura Cruz.
Good evening, Mayor Peck and council members. My name is Laura Cruz, twenty-two-twelve Cedric Court. My husband and I have lived in Ward Two for nineteen years. I've done a lot of research on the Longmont government site as of lately, and I want to just reinforce a couple of the responsibilities. Obviously, you're familiar with them, but there are two in particular that you have as mayor and council. One is to focus on policy issues and, and address the residents' needs and wishes, and the other is to ensure the city government is transparent and responsive to the community. I hope that you're open to hear our needs and wishes tonight. I am requesting that you vote no to the annexation in the current plan for many of the reasons that my prior neighbor just mentioned. But I've been also very much involved in reading the Envision Plan, the Indicators Report, and the ordinances that have changed to really encourage and incentivize this type of dense building. And I have to say that that is the reason why we are concerned. And this idea of now we are known as Apartmont as opposed to Longmont, it's really very, very, um, disconcerning to us. I think that, uh, uh, again, too, I want to emphasize that I, I believe in the development of single-family homes. I think that the homes and the investment that people will have in building equity and generational wealth, as well as the investment in our community versus the transience of rental property is something to consider. I was shocked in focusing on the Envision Plan that there is really no emphasis on what it takes to support this growth. This idea of public safety and the incremental public safety that we need, the changes in water use, the trends, the traffic congestion, the loss of green space, the school capacity, all of these items are not detailed well in the Envision Plan. And I think now we are seeing the aftermath of what's happening in Los Angeles and the fires, the lack of investment, the lack of preparedness, the lack of good governments has affected the lives of these thousands of families there, and they will probably, many of them, never recuperate. I ask you, Mayor and City Council, that you are the stewards of our future, and you, our safety and our quality of life is in your hands. You do have the ability to make a decision, you do have the ability to shift priorities. And I'm reading from Envision Longmont Now, which was initiated in twenty sixteen, I quote, "The long-range planning horizon of this plan requires that it be flexible and adapt to changing conditions. The scope of the, and the pace of change that we've seen, not just in our community, in our nation, and in the world, we've gone through a global pandemics in twenty sixteen, we've seen shifts in the economic landscape, we've also seen shifts in what's happening in the, the population for Longmont. These are all considerations that need to be looked at for even looking at Envision. The intended and unintended consequences need to be looked at." I'm quoting from Envision again, "This document should be reviewed and revised as needed, monitoring the effectiveness of existing policies and the impacts of past decisions, as well as reflect the changes in the community's vision for the future. There is an opportunity to take a look and see what we need today and what we need for our future. I urge you to consider your responsibility to our community and to our future." Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. John Pillman.
John Pillman, thirteen oh-three East Bruce Avenue, Ward Two. A few days ago, someone posted an interesting question on Reddit. The question was, what are the reasons people dislike new rental apartments in Longmont? As I combed through the responses, I saw a lot of what was, I expected, such as, they're big and ugly, there's nowhere enough parking, will create more traffic, will never be affordable, et cetera. But what I also saw was a growing number of folks asked their own question in response. The question was, why does it feel like every new housing development proposed or recently approved in Longmont is a three- or four-story large apartment complex? A few others asked, I keep hearing about something called "missing middle housing" from various news articles and advocacy, advocacy groups. Why isn't the city focusing on this type of housing that can help manage higher density and growth, but in a way that is more compatible with the surrounding neighborhood? By definition, "missing middle housing" refers to a range of smaller mid-density housing types like duplexes, triplexes, and townhomes that fall between single-family homes and large apartment blocks. In contrast, large apartment blocks are typically considered a type of higher-density housing with a more significant mass, scale, and environmental impact compared to missing-middle options. Most essentially, missing-middle housing offers a more scaled-down, community-oriented alternative to large apartment blocks while still providing significantly more housing density and affordability than single-family homes alone. I suspect developers aren't taking this approach be, more seriously since large apartment blocks yield a higher return on investment over a longer period of time. The developer requesting this annexation even states on their website that they seek out development opportunities that maximize investor return. Is developing apartment blocks at eighty-nine oh-two Quail Road with the stated goal of maximizing investor return really what's best for Longmont? So tonight you have an important decision to make. A decision that will send a clear message to Longmont residents and developers alike. On one hand, you can approve this annexation, knowing that an out-of-state developer will build what many folks are now referring to as a three-hundred-and-ten-unit rent farm. Or you can deny this annexation, thereby sending a clear message that the city of Longmont is serious about attracting developers interested in building a more diverse range of missing-middle housing types. Missing-middle housing types would create a more integrated community feel by blending into existing neighborhoods while still achieving our goals of higher density and lowering housing costs. Please do the right thing tonight by denying this request. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Pam Prairie?
Hi, my name is Pam Prairie. I live at two-two-four-six Piccadilly Circle, another second order. So I am going to, uh, listen to Mayor Peck and, um, do my ditto on what the people in front of me said, but I did, um, in looking at what's going on, want to share some information, um, maybe in a, in a condensed form with the council in terms of what you've accomplished with the Longmont housing inventory since two thousand and sixteen, startup Envision Longmont. And you've, you've worked really hard, you've done a lot of great things, and, you know, I don't think anybody envies you how hard it is to tackle this housing issue. But having said that, um, you know, just to remind you of the good things that you've done, uh, since, uh, two thousand and sixteen, you've added sixty-seven hundred residential permitted dwellings. That's almost an eighteen percent increase in the housing stock in Longmont. But an important part of that is to look at what's happened in the last four years. Between two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-four, you added just about three thousand multi-unit, um, residential units, and you added just two hundred and eighty-six single-family residential units. And so, you know, the point here is there really has been a material shift from owned housing to a preference for rented housing. And again, people before me have said much more eloquently than I could that that doesn't have to be the case. And I just want to maybe also share with you, how good are we in the apartment market? Because, you know, the suggestion is, oh my God, we've got to build fourteen thousand units, and the population is going to, blah, da, 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 da. And I would take exception to the population increase numbers because I've looked at what the council has put together on their own, and it's, the numbers are nowhere near what you were hearing. But I took a look at, um, what's the, what's the vacancy rate? You know, that's supposed to be a good measure of how healthy a market is. And if you look at, and this is as of the latest today, um, Longmont's vacancy rate for apartments is just about four point nine percent. If you include Boulder County, the vacancy rate is now at five point eight percent. When I drive around, there are a lot of apartments under construction. If you factor those in and assume that they're going to come onto the market in the next twelve to eighteen months, you can bet your money that, um, the vacancy rate is going to go into the mid-sixes. And you know what? That's a really healthy number. It says we have enough apartments. If you take a look on the other side at single-family house, owned housing, it's pathetic, it's less than one percent. And, you know, my, that's, again, for me, that, that speaks volumes about what, what the city council should be looking at. Um, you know, there are a lot of creative ways, um, and maybe some new ideas in terms of how you look at getting affordable housing and attainable housing into Longmont, you know, for all of those reasons. The, yeah, let's develop the, the property, let's annex it, but it's wrong. The proposal now is not good. So, sorry for overtaking my time, but thank you.
You're welcome. Carol Huss. Okay, Gary, hang in there. We'll get to you.
Oh, goodness. I'm Carol Huss, uh, two-two-two-zero Cedric Court. Um, I just wanted to say thank you at coffee and council, you kind of, Shakita?
Shakita.
Sorry, Shakita. You pointed out how much you work, how hard you guys all work, and I really want to say thank you, and I appreciate it, and I'm also Ward Two. Welcome. This is what I have to say. So your constituents, for whom you represent and whose voices you collectively speak for, truly care about our city. I humbly- I humbly ask each of you to listen to your constituents who voted for you to be our voices and hear our concerns and the directions that we would like our city to go, any personal agendas aside. So the transparency and communications in a timely manner is important to us, and it's a sensitive manner, matter, sorry. So, thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Yes, I just would like for you all to hear us and listen.
We're trying.
I know, I know. Like I said, I know you work really hard. Thank you.
You're welcome. Conrad Kowalik.
Thank you. I'm Conrad Kowalik. My wife and I live at 1043 Willow Creek Circle. Thank you, City Council, for opportunity to provide public comment. We are opposed to this proposed annexation and the development concept plan to build 310 rental apartment units with all the vehicle traffic entering into Clover Basin Drive. We have three primary concerns. One is density. The zoning range at this location, as you know, is between 6 and 18. The concept plan is at the highest part. It's too dense. It's not compatible with surrounding neighborhoods. Traffic. Area residents who utilize Clover Basin struggle with congestion at this location at peak times. 310 apartment buildings, the associated vehicles, it's going to compound the traffic congestion, it's going to compromise safety. Housing type. You've heard a lot about housing type. Let me give you some statistics. Within one mile of this site, 2,178 apartment rental units already exist. 885 additional apartment units are approved and are, or are under construction. That's a total of 3,063 rental apartments within a one-mile radius of our home and our neighborhood. And there's 567 more proposed. This huge increase in rental apartments within this small area is simply too much. We and our neighbors believe City Council should stop, reassess the type of housing that's most needed before approving any development or any additional rental apartment units. Our neighborhoods are being saturated with rental apartment units. What's missing? As John has said, we're missing middle housing. We're missing affordable starting homes for purchase. Yes, people from Frederick, Firestone, Erie, and Deacono work in our city. They're finding their housing out there. We're opposed to annexation, I mean, we're not opposed to annexation. We desire that the city think beyond rental apartments for this site. People should have for-purchase options so they can build equity and contribute to the long-term community here in Longmont. We ask the council to pause, consider the cumulative impacts, as Laura had laid out, public safety, infrastructure, local resources, schools, et cetera, for this small area of Longmont. We encourage the council to take to heart all of the public opposition for good reason. Council has authority to deny this application for annexation and the concept plan that's attached to it altogether, or you could approve it and place restrictions, limits on density.
Thank you very much.
For-purchase housing. Thank you.
Jim Vandergrift.
Good evening. Jim Vandergrift, 3528 Box Elder Drive, Westbrook Village. One of our neighbors, Chris Beck, wrote a letter. She could not be with us here this evening, so she gave it to me to at least excerpt it for you. She points out three main bones of contention, let's call it, with the current plan. First, adequate traffic handling and control for the area should be addressed first. There appears to be no definite plan to adequately handle traffic prior to exacerbating the problem we have today. The idea of the possibility of a traffic circle at Airport and Clover Basin is completely inadequate. Clover Basin, Nelson, and Rogers Road heading east from Airport are all two-lane roads. Clearly, there is not adequate eastern access from Airport Road for all the high-density and other developments already underway and those planned. The additional traffic load of these two annexations will make it even worse. Seventeenth is the next eastern access from Airport Road, a four-mile drive from where the projects are planned. Number two, the transition area from single-family homes to high-density rentals is wholly inadequate. Envision Longmont calls for transition areas. A two-lane road on the north of the annexation with a walking path is not adequate transition. The plan to have one row of two-story homes on the north then proceed to full development height is not adequate, especially when you consider the majority of the homes to the north are ranches, with some two-story homes to the north of the east end of the development. Finally, Longmont has a need for more starter homes. So many rentals are already under development, as has been said repeatedly tonight, or recently completed, much less so is true of starter homes. To survive and thrive, Longmont needs more residents with a commitment and ownership in the city. Starter homes for the annexations under consideration seem a much better solution for those looking to buy a home and those residents surrounding the two areas to be annexed. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, who's next here? Charlotte Hamlet. Charlene, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Charlene Hamlet, 4022 Somerset Court, Ward Two. Welcome, Matthew. Let me begin by acknowledging the time and energy that you all put into serving your community. It is appreciated, even when our voices may differ from your own. 1,084 to 1,000, those numbers will be forever embedded in my mind as they represent the number of homes, 1,084, that we lost, along with two human lives and 1,000 of our four-legged family members during the Marshall Fire just three years ago. What began as a grass fire was deemed out of control within 15 minutes of the first 911 call due to the downsloping winds with gusts up to 105 miles per hour. The panic and horror of that day was a life-altering event, an experience that I hope and pray we never have to endure again. But the reality is, recurrence is imminent, given the number of environmental and human factors that only continue to increase risk. Living along our beautiful front range, where the natural environment blends into urban neighborhoods, presents the highest risk level for catastrophic wildfire for two primary reasons. One, sparks go unnoticed until widespread and are out of control. And two, those downsloping winds coming off the mountain range serve as jet fuel for fire. In the disaster response section of Envision Longmont, I find no mention of wildfire mitigation, no enhanced infrastructure, such as backup water systems in case of failure, as was the case with the Marshall Fire, nor critically important evacuation routes, particularly for those areas that continue to become increasingly dense by design, i.e., Quail Annexation and Conomodo. Have there been any studies done to identify evacuation routes in a high-density, traffic-congested area where few exist? Any assessments regarding the impact of an additional combined 736 residential units along a one-mile stretch of Airport Road when the emergency does arise? Unfortunately, and unlike evacuating during the Marshall Fire, we will not have the luxury of driving through open spaces and parks to escape due to increasing density and insufficient infrastructure. If we turn a blind eye to tragedy in our own backyard, will the recent fire ravaged destruction and casualties in both Maui and LA give us pause?
Thank you. Pause to ensure- The next one is Tanil Abrams.
We are building responsibly and supporting infrastructure. My hope is yes. Y'all hold the key.
Y'all.
Good evening, Mayor Peck and City Council members. I'm in Ward Two as well. Welcome. My name is Tanil Abrams. My address is 4022 Somerset Court. I am here to ask the council to vote no on the Quail Road Annexation and Concept Plan. I understand this development, like many other high-density developments in Longmont, supports the affordable housing goals outlined in Envision Longmont. However, and as you know, there's a growing concern around overdevelopment and the associated implications. Furthermore, a number of changes have occurred since the approval of Envision Longmont Strategy, one of those changes being extreme weather events, which are becoming more frequent and severe because of climate change. I learned firsthand how quickly a wildfire can spread, as our home was one of the homes destroyed in the Marshall Fire. It is one of those life-changing events that I will never forget for many reasons. One of those reasons being the line of traffic I sat in with many other evacuees, trying to make it to safety while watching a plume of smoke become bigger and closer. It was a terrifying experience and something I could never have imagined. That is the problem with lack of imagination or the inability to think about worst-case scenarios. As a resident who lives off of Airport, I am very concerned with the options to evacuate safely when the unimaginable happens. One way the city of Longmont can mitigate wildfires from quickly spreading is by utilizing undeveloped land as fire breaks versus building bigger structures that mean a greater concentration of fire-ready fuel. Again, I'm requesting that you vote no on the Quail Road Annexation and Concept Plan and reassess housing needs based on current data, trends, and safety of the community. Thank you.
Linda Bittner.
Good evening, Council. Linda Bittner, 9455 North 89th, surrounded by Ward Two. I support growth and development. I want to see people of all ages and income ranges have a secure place to live. Now, I'll say ditto to missing middle, let's throw in tiny homes, ADUs, definitely a mix of for-sale and rent. It's what I'd love to see. What I would like to do is urge you to institute a moratorium on annexations. I don't mean development, just annexations, to create a forward-thinking housing plan. Annexation is a discretionary legislative action. If you have any doubts, you can go into executive session with your city attorney. During the moratorium, you could use council contingency funds to hire an outside planner for a comprehensive analysis of the cumulative effects of residential construction over the last five years. This should include traffic impacts, school populations, housing availability, fire evacuation, and alignment with resident desires, and make sure you consider what's in the development pipeline. I also ask that you issue an RFP to invite creative developers nationwide to visit Longmont and share their ideas on future developments that can maximize the potential that we offer, maybe PUDs, I don't know, but let's get people thinking. And if you choose not to enact a moratorium, I ask you to impose the following annexation conditions. Again, consult your city attorney for the legalities. Link the annexation of the adjacent property at 9308 North 87th with 8902 Quail through a forced development agreement. The 9308 property cannot have vehicular access to Airport or Clover Basin Drive due to intersection proximity on those arterials. Access will be required through 8902 Quail, and I think it would be foolish to let development proceed separately. In addition, by coupling the two, I think you can get a more efficient design for both properties. I'd also like to see you mandate deed-restricted housing be placed along the northern boundary. We've heard many times the developer hopes to, but it's only a concept plan, doesn't have to happen, so I would love to see you take some steps toward providing for-sale affordable housing. So, how much time? Okay, so, my appreciation does go out to each and every one of you. I've seen how hard you work, coffee with the council, 1,000-page packets, long meetings. So, thank you very much. I know you're listening. I know you may not go the way all of us want, but I do believe you're all hearing us, and thank you again.
Thank you, Linda. Susan Barber.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Longmont, a tradition of a balance of open green space and carefully considered development. The Quail Road Annex is not consistent with its legacy. I ask the City Council to protect its citizens and preserve Longmont's quality of life. Please do not approve this annexation, its high-density current concept plan, and zoning as per the qualifications on the sheet. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Philkins.
Hi, Katie Philkins, 9615 North 89th Street. Thank you for everything. Thanks for the clarifications, too, by the way. Council Rodriguez, especially on the north end, whether that's going to be two-story. I still feel like material changes. He says that there's nothing specific to necessarily make an adjustment to the concept plan. So I'm thinking logistics going forward, because ditto to everything going here, that we're going to have development, but can we pinpoint exactly what that is? For-purchase is definitely my preference, and I understand, you know, we have to worry about developers making money. I'm not so worried about that. There's choices. The homeowners, by all means, they can sell. They could also sell their property as a single-family home and make probably at least $1 million each. I understand that's not near as much as what a developer is going to give them. But again, we're talking about generational wealth in order to purchase. They purchase their home, and they're passing it to their kids. I would like the same for my kids' able-to-purchase. So going back to logistics, they still did not actually tie in that they will do only for-purchase when it comes to Habitat. So could we put that condition, at the very least? They say they don't know, there might be some in lieu. At the very least, that's like, got to be there. Secondary, it still leaves, what, 273 units only for rent? And going back to generational wealth and ownership, I mean, that's how, I moved here 22 years ago. I've had a business for 19 years. I purchased the condo, then purchased a home after that equity, and got my third home here in Longmont, and I thought this would be my long-term home. I want to stay here. I don't want it to be Apartmont. I want my kids to be able to purchase. This company only exclusively builds apartments for rent. They don't have another option. They have no other plan. They want the highest density because it's the most income. So of course, they're going to choose the 18. It's also cheaper to bill for rent when it comes to code than it comes for sale. So it's cheaper for them to build, and they're going to get the highest amount with this density. It doesn't behoove us, the citizens of Longmont currently here, with all that's there. So, for-purchase, there's going to be other developers, they have other options to sell. We don't have to sell to this developer. So I know annexation, I think clarification went through. I'm not quite understanding whether annexation was already passed by council. I think so, as far as it's, oh, no, okay. Passing code versus legislation to this development, I didn't understand the two things. But going forward, if we could just have more for-purchase, that's like, ideal. I started a petition nine months ago. That's me, 1,300 signatures. I did it again five days ago. We're only up to nearly 500 signatures specifically stating everything people have said here. You chilfus, I guarantee you'll get another 1,000 signatures. You chilfus, I guarantee you'll get another thousand signatures. But, thank you.
Thank you very much. Gary Hodges.
Hello, Gary Hodges, 2148 Stewart Street. So, apartments tend to have residents that are not invested in their community. The last coffee with council, this was tacitly acknowledged when Mayor Peck and Councilwoman Yarborough discussed holding a coffee at an apartment complex so that they could hope to hear from more renters. I'm not intending to disparage renters I have rented in the past, I'm sure most people here have as well, but in general, they're in a more transitory stage in life, and voting records strongly suggest this is true. So, in addition to all the other reasons people are opposed to the extreme apartment development we have seen, I suggest we should give consideration to what it means to add substantial number of residents that have no real attachment to our city. We have a representative government. It's plainly obvious that the vast majority of residents that are invested in our community are opposed to this annexation. So, it's really, as I've been sitting here, it's really hard to grasp how, when this vote does come, that it'd be anything other than a unanimous no. I suggest all annexations should be opposed until the disaster that is our current zoning and Envision Longmont can be reworked so that we can get back to building at least some market-rate, single-family detached housing with gas hookups. So, a vocal majority has got us to this point, and a vocal majority is now being heard. So, that finishes. But I do have one question. Like, who will be the final owner of this? Is it going to be like BlackRock or something like that? I imagine the builder is not the one that's going to manage it going forward, so, that's a question I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Chris Ennis.
Good evening, Council. My name is Chris Ennis. I co-own a property on Blue Mountain Circle, and I wanted to start by saying something that hasn't been said yet, and that is, the community really is trying to be helpful here. We're not opposing all housing or all development, so hopefully that comes through, trying to work constructively. And also, another new thing that hasn't been said, I haven't heard anybody speaking for this development, other than the developer and the people who own the properties currently. So, that's something to keep in mind, what your constituents are saying. The Quail Road annexation proposal presents council with a special and rare opportunity, and I think Tracy, the very first speaker, stole my speech, so I'm going to try to be fairly quick. Annexations are discretionary legislative actions, as stated by Phil Taylor. The word discretionary means you don't, you have, you have the power to say no to annexation if the associated petition doesn't match your vision for the parcel. You are not limited by what this developer is proposing. You aren't limited by the zoning code. Once it's annexed, that's actually up to you, too. Your hands are not tied, and in fact, you are in the driver's seat. You are only limited by your vision now for the parcel. So, what do we need in this area of Longmont? Well, you've heard a lot today. It's not apartments. There are plenty already within one mile, and my neighbor Conrad presented the numbers to you, over 2,000 exist now, and there's about 1,400 that are proposed or awaiting approval within one mile. So, this little tiny area has kind of done its fair share of providing apartments toward the mythical 14,000 or whatever number it is actually, the number of apartments needed. We've done our fair share. The council has done a good job of adding apartments. In contrast, there's only 13 available for-purchase homes under $500,000 within that square mile. Thirteen versus thousands. So, that's what we need on this parcel, homes that permit residents to build equity and invest in Longmont and address this missing middle. We don't need a development that's primarily apartments with a little bit of Habitat for Humanity housing thrown in on the side, just kind of as an afterthought. I would flip that around and say we need something that is mostly what Habitat for Humanity is, and maybe a few apartments. The area cries out for development that is primarily for-purchase homes. This parcel has an agricultural history, another thing to keep in mind. Let's honor that, and pardon the pun, by allowing residents to put down roots and having for-sale properties. And while we're on the agricultural theme, what about an agri-hood that integrates community farming into the planning? That would be something visionary. So, I urge you to vote against this and to have your vision play out.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you. Snowden Campbell.
I'm going to break the time record. Snowden Campbell, 9522 Schlegel Street. Ditto, all that. You're my favorite speaker tonight. Thank you. David Kimmitt.
Mayor, Council, thank you for allowing us to speak so late into the evening tonight, and I appreciate your time. I am unwarded. I live at 9536 Schlegel Street. My name is David Kimmitt, and the only reason why I'm here tonight is because I was afforded the opportunity to first rent an apartment that was about 225 square feet, and then I had a condo that was roughly 600 square feet, and then I had a house that was 800 square feet, and then I had another house that was 825 square feet. And eventually, I built up equity. And unfortunately, when we focus solely on apartment building as what the trend seems to be, we're eliminating the opportunity for the next generation to build equity, and that's where I disagree with Councilman Rodriguez. Although I concur that it is challenging, I know you all up to the challenge to come up with creativity. Equity is important. Yeah, you might not have a piece of grass to throw a picnic blanket down on or have your dog go pee or whatever, but you have something that you can build upon, and with apartments, you don't have that opportunity, and if that's all we're focusing on, we're losing a big portion of our future constituency, and it's really, really going to come back to bite us as a city. I'd like to respectfully disagree with the developer who stated that PUDs were banned in Denver. They are not. PUDs are an act of land use in Denver. Unless there's information otherwise, that was a novel comment to make. PUDs offer a creative opportunity for the city that has worked. Prospect has been mentioned, the neighborhood to the south of, the rec center has been mentioned, pad, the PUD to the east of Costco has been mentioned. These are great. It takes decisive action and diligence to make it through the PUD process, but it can be done. Please don't give up that. I'd also like to call attention to the city's zoning code, 15.03, Section D. The language in the zoning code for neighborhood, sorry, neighborhood, or sorry, residential mixed neighborhood speaks to a different idea. If you look at the design proposed, the design standard drawn in our own city code for neighborhood, for residential mixed neighborhood, it does not show the type of design format that is being proposed at 18 units per acre. Look at our, look at our own code for reference material. It will help us decide a good path to the future. Last, I think we can come up with a new code. We're missing something, and that can't be done tonight. I know this is bigger picture, but we're missing that missing-middle type of housing. We don't need to have 600-square-foot apartments or 2,000-square-foot houses as a minimum.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Jen Morrison.
Good evening. Jen Morrison, I live at 9569 Schlegel Street. You've heard a lot of concerns in the community regarding the compatibility and the potential impacts of this proposed development. As you consider these concerns, I invite you to take a step back and consider also whether it is best for the community as a whole, that it leads us in the direction we want to go, because collectively, all these developments will determine not just what our city will look like, but who we are. And I, for one, want to see a Longmont that's not just for the few who can afford it, that's not just the catchers' mitt for Boulder, as Tyler has called us, but that's for the people who work in or invested in the community of Longmont. The way I see it, there are three main issues with the product this developer is offering. First, look at the numbers. There are already 885 market-rate rental apartments being built within one mile of these properties. Everybody's been saying the numbers. We don't need any more, and unfortunately, that's all they build. Two, affordability. Over $2,000 a month for a one-bedroom apartment is not affordable housing. Again, what kind of community are we creating if people can afford, can barely afford to rent and much less buy a home? Three, we have a diverse range of housing needs in our community, and we need a diverse range of housing types to meet those needs. We need more senior housing, and we need smaller, attainable homes for purchase, and thank you for pointing this out, Tyler, in your data. Absolutely, these parcels should be annexed, but not just for any development, for the right development. As Councilor Popkin said, we need to be more intentional about what we build, how we build, where we build, and for whom we build. I could not agree more. I realize there may be times when your hands are actually tied, when a development meets the code, and other times where you may not even be aware the development is coming through, but because this is an annexation, this is not one of those times, and hopefully, that's clear now with everything everybody else has said. Annexations provide you with a unique opportunity to have more control over what a property becomes than had, than you'd have on existing city limits property. So, if any one of you agrees this is not what our community needs, or you don't like this development, it is imperative upon you to deny it, because in this case, you actually do have the power to, and once annexed, that opportunity and that power is gone. Please don't leave the future of Longmont in the hands of developers looking to build whatever is easiest and most profitable for their investors. Use this opportunity to start being more intentional about what, how, where, and for whom we are building, to demand better for the future of Longmont, to say to the developers, "We see and we appreciate that you have made these revisions to the concept plan, but unfortunately, no matter how thoughtful the design, and regardless of setbacks and step-downs, green space, and any talks with Habitat, the very product you are offering us is just not what we need." I care about my neighbors. I want the best for them, but not at the expense of what is best for our community. And lastly, regardless-
Thank you.
-of your own opinions, put the voice of Longmont before.
Thank you. Patty Leva. You know what? We have been here quite a while, and I know you all want your time. We, we need to have a fast break up here. So, can you give us three minutes, please?
Yeah.
You can sit in one of the front seats while we wait.
Yeah, I'll just start the timer. I'll be right back.
Come up and sit in the chairs so it would be, "We're back."
Can you please take your seats?
Love this gavel.
Yeah, I know.
Please take your seats. Seat. I'll say, "Can you seat?" You're getting slap-happy up here, folks. I'm going to call the next four people, and I would like you to sit in the seats so you can just pop up really fast and give your, so, we have Patty.
Patty Leva.
And I would like to call Garth Lindberg, Bob Rosenly.
Rosensky.
Rosensky. Oh, that's okay. And Charles Schilling. So, go ahead, Patty.
All righty. I'm Patty Leva, and I live at 1101 Alderway, another Ward Two. Congratulations, Matt. I happen to be a resident participant in the last two revisions for Envision- I happen to be a resident participant in the last two revisions for Envision Longmont. And I was really impressed with how we, the input of our thoughts as residents was taken into that particular plant. I read it recently, all 188 pages, and over and over and over, it mentions quality of life, honoring quality of life, honoring quality of life. So I'm going to call attention to the elephant in the room that is negatively influencing our quality of life in southwest of Longmont. I want you to know what it's like living next to a major artery, Airport Road. This is a little segue from the metrics that we're talking about. This is evidence about what current area residents are experiencing, and those who might be living in the proposed Quail Road development on Clover Basin, a minor artery. For 31 years, my husband and I have lived very close to the proposed Quail Road annexation. Our backyard faces Airport. A few years after we built this home, we were surprised to read in the Times Call that this had highway was designated as a major artery. Since then, Airport Road has been resurfaced numerous times, expanded four times, producing more and more accidents, necessitating more police cars with sirens, fire trucks, ambulances, and of course, adding racing cars and motorists with loud mufflers trying to make it through all the lights. At rush hour, tailpipe emissions from numerous trucks, farm equipment, and buses leave a stinking gray cloud. Now, being a nurse who has practiced 56 years throughout eight states and 16 hospitals, I have responded to several bad accidents just 100 feet from our house. I will spare you the gory details of what I've experienced over the years helping the injured, but here's a striking example, not so gory. Out of the blue, this was like three years ago, someone drove right through our backyard subdivision fence, three doors down, and landed in that neighborhood's, that neighbor's backyard. Despite an underpass for kids to walk or bike to school, did you know there has been several children injured crossing this artery at Clover Basin? In the last few years, any conversations on our back deck have been canceled.
Thank you, Patty. I'm sorry.
Due to the heavy noise.
Thank you.
Sure.
Well, first, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Garth Lindberg. I live at 1121 Alderway. I'm the one that had the car in the backyard. As far as the Dry Creek annexation, I think that this should be dealt with the property that's going to be to the west, which they had a typo in it where they said it's on the, I think it said it was on the west side of 87th. It's really on the east side, and they should just call it Airport Road, call it what it is. But anyhow, with that, I think they need to be looked at together because based on that 18 units per acre, if you do the math on it, with that other eight acres there, that's like 452 apartments. So you really need to, whatever happens with this current annexation, it's going to happen with the other one, we're sure. I mean, that's, I can't see how you could deny somebody else something when you give somebody else a higher number. As far as the zoning of it, I think that should be really divided up into two different segments instead of going from six all the way up to 18, because that's part of the problem right there is anybody that in their right mind, if they're selling the property to make more money, or if they're going to make more money off of putting more apartments in there, they're going to always go for the 18. And I understand the owners wanting to rezone it and maximize the profits, but then, at the same time, we're the ones that have to live with it. I'll be able to see it from my cul-de-sac, see all the apartments there. And then, they're also talking about putting on the north side the Habitat for Humanity for two-story houses, and I think the last time they were talking, that may go up to 35 feet with the peak, as they would say it. So it isn't really a reduction in height, it's just, instead of three stories, you have two stories. And then it's, while Habitat for Humanity is good, at the same time, I think there's better places for it. I don't think anybody in the room here is going to want to have that right in their, you know, one house away from them. They had some up by Anderson on the north side, and that was well plotted. It made more sense how the distribution was and how the houses changed sizes as you went further out. And I really think it's going to impact our house values, too. I can't see how it wouldn't. So the current high level of density, I oppose that. If it was something closer to the 12, I think that'd be more reasonable. And I'm also for owner occupied homes. I started off in an apartment that was a fourplex, mowed the lawns, collected the rent, and it was tiny. My next house was an 835 square foot house, and that's what got me into a house. So there's something to be said for affordable housing. It doesn't need to be monstrous. And I think also the, let's look at the time. Anyhow, I think the.
Thank you very much.
I think they're being priced out of the market by apartment builders.
Hi there. Thank you for inviting us to.
Can you pull that microphone down?
Oh, yeah, sure, I'm a shorty. Okay, I haven't heard a single person jump up and down and say, "Goody-goody," except the seller and the developer. And, you know, I'm looking at this from more of a philosophical angle. I've lived in towns similar to Longmont that were vibrant, growing, and to some extent, progressive. Population grew, hence lots of building happened as a result of that. Well, you know, I talked to people from that community. When I was there, it was 75,000, now it's 120,000, just over the course of 10 years. Well, everybody I talked to complains about traffic. And traffic does raise stress levels, and stress levels make for bad drivers. So some of the things I really like about and respect about Longmont is that it's impressed me as being a visionary type of place. Look at what we did with the internet here. It was on the vanguard. And look at Prospect. You know, that's an amazing development, and yeah, I knew about that when I was in Massachusetts. So we have areas that are suitable for developing. People talk about the sugar beet refinery. Yeah, it's, it's got its problems. We know that. But are these problems insurmountable? Would it be possible to issue municipal bonds, or a bond issue, to try to straighten the issue out? And how about thinking a little more creatively? You know, I'm a stakeholder in this city. I don't want to move out of the city because I can't stand the traffic and the congestion. How much time do I have? Ooh, good, another. So I think, you know, maybe some kind of creative thinking where the city and the city stakeholders, you know, are able to establish a financial interest in building up the city.
Excuse me, I need to make a motion.
What?
What?
You can finish this time.
Okay. Go for it, you do.
Okay, so, you know, life is a lot different now than it was in 2016. You know, we've got AI, we've got more people working out of the house. It's just a completely different paradigm. So why don't we think about building something that people will like instead of a crappy, you know, 500 square foot apartment at, you know, 15 to $2,000 a month? And I've watched the way these places go up. They're done without any soul whatsoever. Sure, we'll put more gables, you know, on the, on the square blocks, and we'll put some frivolous architectural embellishments there so it looks aesthetic. Well, I think we can do better than that, and I hope we do. Thank you.
You're welcome. So according to our charter that we, our rules of procedure, we end at 11:00, and need a motion to proceed past 11 o'clock at night. So can I have a motion? Mayor Potem.
So I move that we extend the meeting.
May I make a friendly amendment and say that we extend for an hour and then revisit the, a motion to extend?
Hopefully, we're done before now.
Yes. So can we extend for just an hour? Or less?
Yeah, I do, I do. Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay. So the motion to extend past 11 o'clock's been made by Mayor Potem with the caveat or the amendment that we go for another hour.
Or sooner.
Or when we get, when we get through this list.
Yeah.
And it's seconded by.
And that was seconded by Councilor Popkin. So all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed?
Nay.
I'm sorry, I have, I have an early morning meeting.
Okay.
I could go next if you wanted.
Yeah, who did? Let's do this again. All those in favor, say, raise your hands, please.
To extend the meeting?
To extend the meeting. Two. Three. All those opposed? Four. So we will go until we're, no, that failed.
Yeah, we failed. We've got to be done.
I have a feeling I know what you're all going to say. So.
They're waiting all this time.
I mean, I tried.
Can we do what?
Can I just vote to extend?
Okay, I move that we extend this meeting until we get through this list. Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved by myself, seconded by Mayor Potem. Hidalgoferring, all those in favor, raise your hand, say aye. That passes, one, two, three.
Oh, you didn't say, who's opposed?
Oh, who is opposed? You're opposed to that?
Yeah.
I agree. Porting of order, we ready to take the vote?
That one passes, so we'll finish the public comment.
Okay, let's go.
Yeah, we can finish.
Charles Schilling.
Thanks for all your support. Charlie Schilling, 224 Francis Street, Ward Two. So I've fled Sproul my whole life, and I'm tired of running from it, and my family lives across the street, my dear grandchild lives across the street. Nobody wants to go anywhere, but we're out of here if this place just becomes untenable. So that's why I'm here. I want a quality of life, and it's plainly obvious that the majority of Longmont's not happy with the type of housing you're seeing in this city. You've heard all about where we want to go with that, what we like, what we don't like, so I won't repeat that. Developments have to be compatible, and most importantly, we need housing developments that are thoughtfully placed, not just anywhere and anywhere. So high density housing on a scale like this concept needs to be placed a quarter mile from shopping, or it'll create a transportation mess that residents don't want. We all know this. Good urban planning, Envision Longmont, and new transit oriented community laws coming out of the state are asking for density to be near transit hubs and shopping. So we need to put densities like this, I think, in the 10 to 18 units per acre by transit and shopping. Transit hubs, transit hub is not a bus stop, right? So adding a bus near this development's not a realistic or practical solution to the transit problem created by high density on the site, and neither are minivans. So we need to put this kind of development where it belongs, which is, I guess, Main Street, or Sugar Mill, or areas where they're going to have high density. And also, you can polish the design all you want. I've heard this trick before, but design and density are, they can be intermingled, but they're separate. Density creates the primary problem of traffic and congestion, and it could be the most beautiful community and the best architecture, you've still got the primary issue of traffic and density. Again, I've seen that trick before, and it muddles, it muddles the water. Also, the habitat and affordable housing stuff seems really sketchy, so I'd keep an eye on that. And then, we hear a lot from the city, we're out of land, and we can't tell the builder what to do, or if we do this, we'll get sued. Sorry, this is a repeat, but I want to really drive it home that this is a unique opportunity. You're not going to get sued. This is great. Do the right thing here and bring in a development like the one we've all been describing for you. If you need any more help, we can have another three hour session, but.
No, thank you.
And for the newly appointed council, Ward Two councilperson, welcome. Please work with us so we can support you. A good start would be to demonstrate you listen to us carefully and vote no on this. The majority of Ward Two in Longmont urges a vote against this annexation and instead asks for a concept plan that's a much better fit for this location for all of Longmont and future generations to come, like my grandson. Thank you.
Thank you. I cannot read this name. It's at 1210 something. I think the first name's Dan or Ben.
Ron Spurle.
Ron what?
Ron Spurle.
Maybe.
1210?
Yes.
1210, yeah. Yeah, that, I could not make that out at all.
No, could not read that one. All right, the next is Stephen Rutherford, Rebecca Maronick, Steve Altshuler, and Will Doyle.
Just come sit up here.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Beck and council members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk tonight. I live in a resident, my name's Ron Spurle, excuse me. I live at 1210 Rodeo Court in Longmont. And I live in a residential development called Grandview Heights, which is directly east of this property. And I want to clarify something that I think was misunderstood at the, one of the last planning meeting. When they asked if the property to the east was zoned the same way, they said yes, and maybe the map says that in Envision Longmont, but in reality, it's not a dense development. Okay? So we have, we have basically, we have 27 homes on 7.54 acres. Okay? So this development is 310 and 17.34 acres, which is at least five, almost five times the density. So the point I'm making, of course, is it is surrounded by this, the projected development is surrounded by residential on the north, the east, the south, and so obviously, we think it's too dense. So I would ask for your consideration, and I would like to see you deny that annexation as it exists today, and consider something more appropriate for that property in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan, or Ron.
Yes.
No, thank you, Ron. Oh, man, it is late.
Hello, my name is Stephen Rutherford, and I live at 8860 Craig Road. Tonight, you've heard from a lot of mostly elderly people. Now you're going to hear from someone much, much younger. I, about a month ago, I was upset and shocked to hear the story of the struggle to find housing of the daughter of my neighbors. She can't be here tonight to tell you her struggles, but asked me to read this letter to you on her behalf. Letter to City Council. I am a 37-year-old single mother, born and raised in Boulder County. My great-grandparents moved to Longmont in 1937. My grandfather attended Longmont High School, graduating in 1945. My great-grandfather was a police officer in Longmont, and was able to purchase a home on Sumner Street for his family on a single income. That same 800 square foot home is now unaffordable to me. My family moved from Boulder to Longmont in 1998 and have been part of the Schlegel neighborhood ever since. When I got divorced, I moved in with my parents while looking for a safe place to live for me and my daughters. I spent a lot of time looking for a place that would be suitable for my family, but also that would be affordable on a single. I spent a lot of time looking for a place that would be suitable for my family, but also that would be affordable on a single income. I have seen so many apartment buildings, townhomes, single-family homes, and condos being built in Longmont over the past few years. And as someone who was looking for housing, it would seem as though there is enough housing available at prices that would be more on the affordable side. Unfortunately, that is not true. And though the idea of more apartments being built is concerning for various reasons, the point I am trying to make is that building more apartments that cost upwards of $2,000 a month for a studio or one bedroom, or a two-bedroom unit for $2,500 and up is not affordable in our town. Building units that are out of reach for most inhabitants of our town is wrong. We truly need, what we truly need is more housing affordability. The apartments that are being discussed for the Quail Annexation need to be homes that are affordable to working-class people within Longmont. I have always loved living in Longmont and want to stay here. I have applied for many housing assistance programs so that we are able to stay. The problem is that there are thousands of people who are applying for housing assistance, and only a handful of homes or apartments available for these people.
Thank you, Stephen.
I want to raise my children here.
Thank you. Rebecca Maranick?
Yeah, Ward Two. Rebecca Maranick, 1308 Indian Paintbrush Lane, directly east, or sorry, south of this development. We missed that first meeting, and so we didn't get some of the lower-two-story concessions on our end. Anyway, I will attempt not to repeat anything. Tons of great points. I think the point here is you're seeing how serious we are about this through repetition, right? Like, that's why nobody's giving up their chance to talk. This is important. So, mostly going to talk off the cuff, try and not repeat things. I have a middle schooler. Last year, his class was 28 kids. One teacher, 28 kids. That's a lot. That's Blue Mountain Elementary. This year, he's at Altona. He has to cross Airport to go to school. Matthew's heard this before. Four tenths of a mile up to that underpass. There is no way he is getting up early enough to bike to that underpass and go under. I will not allow him to bike to school. He has to get a ride. He is not allowed to cross Airport Road on his own, and he is a cautious kid. I know personally two other kids who have been hit by cars at that intersection. Clover Basin and Airport is dangerous already. Drive by there at 8:10. I welcome you all. Come add your car to that traffic and see what it's like to drive past Altona Middle School and Eagle Crest. Blue Mountain's a little further down. Let's see, another concern, cell phone towers. I heard somebody else say this. This was not my idea. I can't make a call when I'm walking my neighborhood. If I slip on the ice, break my leg, I'm going to hope one of my neighbors has a good enough signal to call, because my phone will not call out. You add 400 more units to that corner, nobody's going to be able to make calls. The power you have here is, as the city council, you are both the left and the right hand. Now, when we were talking to the Housing Commission, all they can do is say, yep, this fits all the requirements, yep, this is housing. Planning, sorry, planning. Anyway, he can't know what was going on with traffic. He can't know those things. Now, now you have the power. Now you are city council. Now you can know, left hand and right hand, both, what they're doing. We need infrastructure before you consider any more building. We have so much building going on in this area. We've got ciggies. We've got this corner proposed. We've got By Home Depot already breaking ground. We've got the Nova West by Target almost completed. There is so much going on here, and we won't know the impacts for quite a while yet. We need to consider that significantly. This unit will not be built in a vacuum. The developer, it's not his fault, but he can't tell us what's going to happen outside of his little parcel. He doesn't know. It's not his job to know. It is your job to think of that, consider that, and do the right thing here. Slow a little bit down, take another look, consider some impacts, because there will be negative impacts. Already, what is being built will cause negative impacts to our traffic, let alone more. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Altshuler.
Good evening, Councilman Popkin. I want to thank you for having everybody speak, or else there might have been a riot here tonight, or at least encouraging your fellow members to say yes. Steve Altshuler, 1555 Taylor Drive. I've lived off of Clover Basin, by the way, Ward Two. I've lived off of Clover Basin for 18 years. Two weeks ago, when I was talking here, I asked the question of what population does this council want to see Longmont reach? We're 100,000 now. Did you want 150, 200,000? What is your goal? With all this construction going on, that has to be a consideration. I spoke with one of the council members, and I was told that, according to them, the optimum number, or according to other people, the optimum number for a city is 135,000. I questioned that, because it doesn't say anything about if it's a four-square-mile city or a 20-square-mile city. You know, so there's other factors that have to come into that. But we're at 100,000 right now. I don't know where the builder got that 14,000-units-shy number, because we have hundreds and hundreds of empty units already, as you've all been told tonight. There's an average of two and a half people per unit in America. That would bring us to 35,000. If there's 14,000 units to be built, that'd be 35,000 more people, which magically is the exact number that I was told Longmont should have. So I don't know where they got their data from, where they pulled that from. I didn't see any lineup of cars outside of the city waiting to come in, and somebody counting the number of cars. So I don't know where that 14,000 came from. But with 35%, 35,000 more residents, you're going to have 35% more traffic, 35% more crime. You know, the numbers don't just go up in a vacuum. It affects everybody's life. With 310 units, you're probably going to have at least 600 cars going in and out of that complex every day. No one's talked about the cars yet. Are all these units going to be two-car parking, or one-car parking, or zero-car parking? And last year, city council lowered the number of parking spaces required. So where are all these cars going to park if there's not enough room in this complex for itself? I was also curious about how many years the construction would take, and nobody's talked about that. So all the trucks going in and out on Clover Basin while the construction is going on, and then some units, people are moving in, you still got the trucks and everything, how long is that going to take? Several people, I think either Shakita last week, or Suzie this week, both mentioned something about senior housing, and one of the speakers mentioned it. Why not put up senior housing there, kind of like Fraser Meadows in Boulder, where the seniors can actually own the unit, and you can have an independent business as a caterer, where it can do the catering?
Thank you, Steve.
That was pretty much it. And the airport pathway. Thank you.
Seeing no one on the list, I'm going to close. Public invited to be heard. Okay, might as well. Come on over. Set it for two minutes.
Brutal, okay.
Brutal.
Okay, thank you all for listening. I'm going to bring up three unique points that I don't think have been brought up to this point. One is that I would love to see a show of hand for my neighbors, who the developer has talked to. I don't think you're going to see any hands. We live, by the way, sorry, my name is Peter Bertaglia. I live at 9423 North 89th Street. We are just north of the property that's under discussion. We are arguably most impacted by this, and no one has contacted us at all. And I would love to see if there's a single hand in this audience of someone that has actually talked to the developer. They have not. The second thing I wanted to mention is that we talk about matching what the neighborhood is like surrounding this property. I can tell you firsthand, in trying to build a garage, we were capped at 18 feet, not 35 feet. We were kept at 18 feet for our garage. The other thing I wanted to point out is while the developer has conceded a second story that's on the north side, which we much appreciate, they have still kept the maximum height at 35 feet. It makes no difference. There is no step-down when the maximum height is still 35 feet for the three-bedroom, or for the three-story, and for the two-story. The last thing which I want to state, which is a little bit different from everybody else's comments, even though I very much appreciate all that, and I'm sure you all don't want to hear this again, is I want to, I want to call out our neighbors. The Wards, the Boren's, the Kestners, these are our neighbors. We are not, we are not here tonight to argue that they should not be able to sell their property for a profit. We are arguing that when this property is developed, it is done in a tasteful way. We know our neighbors. We're somewhat the new folks in the block. We've been here about five years now. Melanie was our 4-H leader. My son goes to the Ward's house on a regular basis to talk to Charlie about tractors, to talk about all kinds of things like that. We, our kids shovel some of their walkways and driveways, not all the time, and I hope they're in bed right now, but these are our neighbors, and we care about them. And what you're hearing from all of us tonight is not that we don't want the property to get developed, and that we don't want the best for our neighbors. We want what's best for all of Longmont, and for this property to be done in a tasteful way. Appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, now I'm going to close. Public invited to be heard. Thank you, everyone. I really appreciate your staying, and thank you for your lightheartedness, a lot of laughter. That's good. We know this is serious, and we are listening to you. Safe travels home if you're leaving now, or you can stay and listen to the rest. I know. We did. No. We closed the meeting after the last people on the list were, so that's why I said good night. So, we're just going to make last comments as far as what's on our agenda, needs to be postponed, the transportation, the investment reports, the last four things on this agenda.
Item 9G, 10F, and all of 12.
Yeah, so we have 9G, which is the sign.
9G is the Humane Society contract. Yep. Harold? 9G is the Humane Society contract that was pulled from consent? As well as 10F, just one moment, as well as 10F and items on general business.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we can't hear anybody. We're trying to wind up this meeting, and it's kind of noisy. So, would you mind speaking outside of the chambers? Having your conversations? Okay, 9G, you pulled that from the consent agenda. Shakita did. All right, we'll start with that, and then, but we've already had a motion to adjourn, I mean, to, in the meeting.
We do need some direction in terms of what you're going to do with this item, and are you going to table it to a date certain? Based on the conversation we had, we would go to that date certain. You would then have to talk about direction and what you want to do, and then you would potentially have to table it again, based on the way that you voted to extend the meeting.
Do we not just pick up the meeting where it ended at the next meeting?
Mayor and Council, Eugene May, City Attorney. It seems like the public comment period is over. Perhaps you'd like to close that and continue this item to some date certain?
I'd close the public comment. We can't make a decision at the retreat. So, let's make a motion to a date certain, and Shakita, I'm going to let you do that, because you're the one that brought it up to begin with. And at that point, is that good enough, Eugene?
Mayor and Council, I'm not sure what you're trying to achieve, so it's hard to say whether that's enough.
Do you want more discussion, and on what subjects, on what area?
So what I wanted to know, I want to see what we can do as far as with staff, I want staff to let us know what we can do, because it seemed like there's no wiggle room at all with the developer. But we hear what every, what the constituents are saying, and so, I mean, we are listening, but we want to know what we can do, you know? So if you all tell us we can't, if you can't work with the developer on some of their wishes, or no wiggle room, then we need to have some alternatives. What do you mean?
Turn on your mic.
Well, not that, are we at, I thought we ended the public invited to be heard, and that was the end of the meeting, so we're faced with a conversation after it by default, if I'm not mistaken.
We're going to have to reopen the meeting.
Yeah, and so that would allow, so we have, tell you reopen the meeting to get some of the answers that you're, I think, trying to.
Well, I just want to continue it. That's it.
I move to reopen this meeting so we can address.
I don't think you can do.
We can't, I don't see how we can continue this if we closed the meeting. So if we reopen the meeting to resolve the issue of what we want to do with the annexation, as well as the consent agenda item that was not pulled.
Mayor and Council, it seems like you should reopen the meeting and at least give direction to staff and the remaining, staff members for the remaining agenda item, what's going to happen.
Okay. I move that we reopen this meeting to address the annexation, how we want to handle that, as well as the consent agenda item that was pulled, because we have to get through that. No.
I think the priority is there needs to be some closure on the annexation item.
Okay.
You can't just stop.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded by Counselor Popkin that we reopen the meeting to continue to address the annexation. All those in favor? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? That passes. What, are you? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see it. So that passes six to one with Counselor Rodriguez in opposition. Okay. From my perspective, we, right now, we have to make a motion either to extend the item with, I'm sorry, to table the annexation with direct, direction to staff as to what we want to address in that. Or we have to vote to approve or deny the annexation. So, you are ready to go? Is, am I correct in that? Those are our two options. Either vote on the annexation, or we have to vote on it, either to table it with direction to staff, or to vote on it to accept or deny.
Mayor, my advice would be that because of the communication to the members of the public, that you either table it to a date certain
Right.
with or without direction to staff.
Thank you.
Understanding that if there's no direction to staff, there's not a conversation that we can have
Okay.
until we come back and discuss this issue.
Okay. So, Counselor Yarborough, do you want to make the motion to a date certain, and that's it? it? That's the whole motion?
I don't know a date certain, what's a certain date that I can make the motion to?
We cannot have it go very long.
Let me look at a meeting really quick.
Could you change the study session to a regular?
That's, that's what I wanna see, what's on the study session.
The study is short for the executive board. Sorry.
Harold, do you have council member photos before that meeting on the fourth, if you're looking at the fourth?
Yeah, that may be one we have to reschedule with what we have going on.
There's one item on the agenda and now only one executive session, that will only take 15 minutes afterwards. Well, and if you move the legislative item over.
I think we can move it to next Tuesday.
Fourth.
We can change the study session to a regular session, and then we will take this item to finish up, we will bring the other items that council didn't address, um, and then I will assess the time requirements based on the one item that we have on the study session. So I would continue it to the, uh, the fourth.
Okay.
And then we'll just move the remaining items over that we didn't get to today, um, to take action, 'cause there, you know, there are folks waiting on contracts that we need to, um, take action on.
Okay, so I move that we continue, um, uh, ordinance 202509 to February 4th.
Thank you, Mayor Beck. I'm, I'm not opposed to tableing this at all. I wanted to respect staff's wishes for some direction here, and I guess I wanted to ask, are we offering direction now or are we just simply tabling this to the fourth to then discuss what direction to offer you? Is that the, is that the request?
Correct, then you would probably need a table to another date certain.
Okay, I, I am not opposed to that. Um, I just wanted to make sure we are either giving staff clear direction or being clear to the public and to ourselves as to what we're taking up on February 4th. With that, I'm fully supportive of this motion.
That was my question as well, was about direction to staff, so.
The motion was made by Counsel Yarborough to table the annexation decision, uh, 2025, what was that?
09.
09 to February 4th, and it was seconded by...
Second.
Counselor McCoy.
Counselor McCoy. All those in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
All those opposed, and that passes unanimously, and I apologize to staff for this. Very unique decision.
I'll take you out for a drink.
Yeah.
Not worth three as it is.
So do you, uh, we're just gonna move through then with, uh, council comments? Seeing, seeing no one?
Wait, wait.
No, it's not, 'cause we reopened it. So, uh, City Manager, remarks?
I could save you all some time.
Your mic's not on.
No.
City Manager, remarks, um, in terms of managing the agenda, I know one of the items was the retreat.
Yes.
If there's not an issue with the retreat item, I can manage the agenda and time-wise and not put that on, unless you all want me to put it on.
Um, this is for Sandy. Um, we just had a little conflict, Counselor Popkins, with the date, so, um, as far as I'm concerned, we can put that on the next agenda as well.
Okay, so we'll just keep it on the agenda then?
Correct.
All right, no comments.
Okay, uh, City Attorney.
So Mayor and Council, I just wanna make clear, council is changing next week to a regular session?
Yes.
And we're gonna carry over the remaining agenda items?
Yes.
Uh, from this meeting to next week.
And we forgot, we, you will have an exec session next week...
Okay.
...on a different matter. That exec session will actually be at the end of the meeting, um, because of the, um, schedule with the council picture.
Okay.
So we're gonna keep it tight.
So we have the council picture, the exec meeting, and...
Council picture, regular session...
Council and exec.
...with a tight agenda and then exec session.
Okay. So maybe coun, uh, Public, Public Invited to Be Heard should maybe just be a minute and a half?
Yeah.
'Cause I think it's gonna be the same people. I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn, moved by Counselor McCoy, seconded by Counselor, no, by Mayor Proton Hidalgo Ferring. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? We are adjourned.